Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the work session, which will be followed that meeting for September 20th. This is a work session, a regular work session for the council. Ian, please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And of course, please hold your role.
Councilmember Robin Aki.
Here.
Councilmember Frank Banker.
Present.
Councilmember Glenn Gunn.
Present.
Councilmember Leslie Notaro.
Present.
Councilmember Rita Swope. Vice Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Here.
Mayor Joseph Manzo.
Here.
City Manager Lynn Reeves.
Here.
City Attorney Fred Riley.
Here.
All right, this is a work session. It's a little less formal than a regular session, but we're not going to get so informal where it's just going to be a shouting match of discussion where everybody's talking about. So one for a certain time is the rule. You know, normally you have to look to me to get my attention. Really don't have to do that, just if there's a conflict, but please don't interrupt anyone. That's not going to be a work session or any other time. With that said, normally we do allow comments from the public. It's not actually something that's in our rules, but the council has always relaxed that rule. Is there any objection to allowing the citizens to comment? I'm hearing none, so citizens will be allowed to comment. The way we'll do this is the council will speak about it. We're not voting on anything, okay? So as we get to a point, a breaking point, where it's appropriate, I'll ask if there's any citizen comments, and the same thing, just come right up here, speak at the podium, go back to your seat. You get to speak once on any issue, three minutes. And then we'll probably, you'll hear consensus if we have something that's moving forward, or sometimes this is just a discussion. We're not allowed to speak to each other outside of here, so this is our chance when we can discuss things that are on our mind. With that said, I'm going to move to item number one, discussion of possible code additions and/or revisions concerning derelict boats and boat lifts and docks in service disrepair. Vice Mayor Gaddis made this motion, and the explanation is community health, safety, and welfare during environmental events. Dave Gaddis.
Sure. We had a storm not too long ago, and I don't know if it was because of the storm, but the timing was very close. I think a lightning strike hit one of the docks or boat lifts that was already in disrepair. It had a boat that had not been started in years or dropped. So that led me to question, what do we have in place right now for these types of scenarios? So I took a ride in the boat this weekend and just kind of looked around, and I did notice there are quite a few boats that have not been started, much less dropped in the water in years. You see the cables, the gearing, the whole structure of the boat lift is rusted. Looks like you could easily just push on it and knock the boat in the water. So my question is, for the council, is this something that we really should take a look at and consider maybe adding onto our code? I see that someone provided us with, it looks like samples from another people's code. Is that right? Yep. Mayor, council, I gave you our section of the code currently, and then there's some sections I found from some other cities that talk about, you know, derelict boats and how they handle that. So that's just some additional information. I tried to highlight where it was discussed in the back pages, but the first section is our ordinance. So going back to that, not only is it a hazard, as we saw, in fact, Robin saw it also. This boat fell. It started taking on water. They didn't know what to do. I saw what was happening. There were a couple of people trying to ramble it up to a dock. So I rushed over there with a bunch of line, and it helped them secure it, which it just stayed there for another week or two and wasn't touched again, because now it's floating on the water, but we all know it can't run. Eventually, it started taking on water, sank, and then flipped upside down in the water. Then I watched people, I don't know who they were because it was too far away, but you could see clearly they did not know what they were doing, and they were putting their lives at risk by trying to upturn this boat the right side up and bring it up out of the water. Someone could have gotten killed. And the whole reason for this is because we're not doing anything about these boats that are just sitting out there waiting to fall in the water or possibly even hurt someone. I understand that we do pay particular attention to the docks and the seawalls, but I think that the boat lifts and the boats are something that we're neglecting. That's my thoughts.
I support this. I saw that debacle happening. I mean, I've talked to Lynn before numerous times about docks that are half in the water that have been like that for years, or boats that had a tree growing out of it because it hasn't been moved in so long. And I'm not talking a little tree, I'm talking a tree. So yeah, I'm all for this. I guess the question comes with how to police it, like we'd have to have somebody on a boat going around, and we'd have to figure out those logistics. But I'm with you, Dave, on this with the safety issue, because, and not only that, but if that boat floated away, it could hit somebody else's dock and incur damage, and who knows? Hit a passing boat that they didn't realize and caused damage and harm to life there. So I'm all for this.
Any other folks listening?
Frank, is that my comment? I'm sorry.
When you were taking your observation, were you like listening to a degree where they just...
Well, they, whenever they're tilted one way or the other, that's generally where the last time that they lifted it, they didn't put the boat on correctly. It may have been not running correctly to begin with, and they came in limping. And we're just lucky to get it on that lift. But generally, the way that lifts are designed, they take care of themselves. They automatically balance, provided that you put it in the center. You know this, of course. But yes, some of them are a little sideways.
Yeah, I'm talking about the ones that are in the water right now. Are there any permanent boats that just haven't been picked? You know what I'm saying? What do you want that in?
I've not seen so many that are in slips. It's more of the boat lifts. The ones on the slips, they seem to be in, they seem, generally, they're the larger boats, and people tend to take care of them. It's usually the 20, 24, 27, 29 footers that go up on the lift, and they're just, they're tired of it. And now it becomes not only a hazard, but a nuisance to everyone in the community.
Well, most of those lifts have a quarter inch cable pulls them out. Any of your observations of those cables? Because most of the OSHA rules or whatever, cable has more than three breaks, and it needs to be replaced. Pretty strands of water. So that would be an easy visual inspection, is what I'm saying, you seeing something like that. I'm not saying the hoist is any better. The mounting of the hoist could be rotting where as soon as the cable is put to a task, and it'll pull right off in the morning. But stuff like that can be easily visually inspected.
Yep. My thoughts on the boat lifts themselves is that perhaps maybe a good inspection would be, let's see the thing work. Let's see you lower it and raise it back up, because I guarantee you, there's at least a dozen or more that won't do anything. Everything's rusted. You can tell there's no power to them, and there they are holding the boat. Those are the ones that I worry about the most. And then for the boat owner, something else that none of us have considered, if that boat's not being used at all, and it's up on a lift, it's up in the air, over time, the boat plug hole is going to get plugged. The debris happens. The boat we keep talking about, we know for a fact that thing has to be full of water because birds have built nests in that boat. As soon as the boat plug, if there's no power, there's no battery operating the pumps inside of it, it rains enough, that thing becomes twice, maybe three times as heavy as what it's designed for. And suddenly, you've overpowered that lift, and now you've got an anchor. It's going straight to the bottom of the water whenever that thing breaks. These are just my thoughts. I don't really know what the council would like to see, but I think it's definitely something that we should be addressing in some way or another. Even if we decide not to do anything about it, at least I will have a good conscience knowing that we discussed it and talked about it, you know?
Are you looking at the legalities or real, can we go into a person's property and mandate them to go?
Let me say, Fred, no, you cannot go into somebody's property. You can look like Dave did from the water. I assume you were on your boat, right?
But he raises a good question about put the lift to a task to see if it works. But I'm not disagreeing with you. Oh, that would be a great solution, right? And I don't know if you can make me...
Well, you know, let's unpack this a little bit, okay? When I hear about, I don't own a boat, and I don't own waterfront property, so I have no dog in this fight. But my dog in the fight is to make sure the city stays safe. And I think this is a valid concern. A boat that has trees growing out of it and is falling apart is clearly a boat that's not being used. But I'll take the other side. I can buy a boat if I want and set it up on a lift and never use it. You can't tell me how much I have to use it. So I think we have to figure out a way of differentiate between the boat with the tree, that's clearly not seaworthy, which, you know, we don't permit it with a car. You can't put an inoperative car in your driveway that's dead, that doesn't move, or all rusted out. You can't do that. You gotta put that in your garage if you're going to work on it or something like that. Maybe something like that takes care of these people who just say, I want to just put a, you know, an old boat that I'm collecting. Well, okay, put that in storage someplace. Maybe not on a lift. In terms of, you're talking about seeing the lift. I like that idea. We could easily, if we want, have an annual boat inspection. Now, we're going to need somebody to do this. It's going to be more work, but that's your inspection. Once a year, you get a little sticker from us that says, "It works." We don't have to allow you to drop, you know, multi-ton boats into the water. Particularly, as I recall, these things are hydraulic, but they can work on electric, do they not?
They're generally motor-driven, not hydraulic.
So it's electric?
Yeah.
Okay, so there's a safety concern if that thing busts up. So, I mean, I don't see why, as if it was a concern to the city, that you don't have, you know how many waterfront lifts we have? Would it be something that would be so difficult to go out and do? You know, this inspection, we take off what I'm in. Take you longer to drive to the next place to get to see it. But it would have to be scheduled, and you could set that up every once a year. You show how the boat lift works, and you get it just like you get a registration on your car. You get a registration for your boat lift, something that can be seen from the water, so that if we send the code around, they could see it. I mean, that's one easy way of doing it. As, you know, the ones with the trees are easy. The one, though, that guys, like, you're talking about boats not being used, and I'm just saying, well, it's my choice if I want to use it. I see a lot of boats that are not being used that I wish I owned, and they were beautiful. But some people just don't go voting. They go twice a year, so I don't want to say you gotta use them X amount of time. But when trees are growing out, you know, that's a different...
That's fine, I understand that. I just think that, for instance, you've got a boat that's not tied, it's not strapped here left, and a hurricane is coming. You should probably have the capability of getting that thing out of there because you're going to damage something. If we get any kind of storm surge at all, it's going loose, and it's going to wreck everything in our neighborhoods.
Fred? I'm not going to ask for an answer. I'm just going to say, we're getting into an area of law I know pretty much almost nothing about, which is maritime law. You know, Dave just made a suggestion. Now, it sounds great for us to say, hey, if your boat, you got an anchor, a hurricane is coming. But then we get into the whole Coast Guard regulation, these intercoastal water regulations. And I have no idea what the city's authority is to tell you you gotta do anything on that if we even have such an authority. I mean, it sounds great. You know, I don't think anyone can disagree with. I don't want your boat floating around, but, you know, I don't know. You know, I don't expect an answer. I'm just saying, we're getting into a fairly complex area of maritime law, are we not? One second, Leslie, you got here after Fred.
I'd like to get to Leslie.
Then Rita, okay. So Leslie, then Rita, after Fred.
My answer would be, start with the inoperable car analogy. You, code enforcement deals with that in every city. You certainly can put something in related, it would appear to me related to derelict boats, and that's the easy one. If there's a tree growing out of it, then it's... Probably a derelict boat, the one that's fallen in the water and is overturned, that's the definition of a derelict boat, I would say. The question you're asking that's really related to how do you force people to do storm preparation, that's something I won't even venture a guess with now. It's something to look into. But to me, the starting point would be, look at how other cities have handled the derelict boats, because that's one end of the spectrum, and see how other people handle it and how far you could go. That would be my suggestion.
Oh, yeah, Leslie, maybe?
Yeah. Our current code in section 353 sub H says that all permits for docks, lures, pilots, et cetera shall be issued on the condition that such construction will be maintained in a safe condition at all times. So it could be just a matter of enforcing that, having our code enforcement enforce that provision. I also love the one, I guess this is Clearwater Beaches.
Leslie, just tell us the pager on some...
Well, it's where they start the yellow stuff. Thirty-three dash zero five five. The second paragraph down from the top, and it's yellow.
Okay, I see.
Saying it is unlawful for a person for reparation to store leave or abandon any derelict dust in any of the avenues of waters. So something along this lines. Incorporating that into our code, I think, would solve 90% of the problem.
Rita?
Yes, I have a question for the city manager. During your research on this and getting all this together for us, did any of the other municipalities run into any major issues that they discussed or, you know, brought up to you by enforcing these rules and regulations on their citizens?
No, it's basically what they were talking about is derelict boats. And they're, you know, our definition, we have a definition of derelict boat. I know what Dave's talking about because we did a tour of the city, I can't remember when that was, but it was several months ago. And we went around, looked at docks and seawalls, and then we notified the residents and that, you know, maybe their dock wasn't repaired, wasn't in safe shape, so we gave them a courtesy notice. And I can tell you, or I think it was 16 docks, 13 of them have taken care of them just with a little courtesy notice. We didn't do any more than that. So, and we're working on the seawalls follow-up because we gave some for cracked seawalls or horizontal cracks and vertical seawall caps. So I think, I mean, I kind of like the idea that the mayor brought up about, hey, maybe we could give them a sticker. And if that, if it's possible to even do that. You know, if we go out on a tour and we see some that are, there's a concern, then maybe we should ask them to show that their boat lift is in a safe situation. As an example, the tree boat, that guy, he did take the tree out finally, after we told him about how many times, but...
I don't have the tree.
Right. I don't think that boat's ever left the place. That's, you know, that may be an opportunity. And I don't know if we do the same thing we did with the seawalls and docks after the storm. Maybe we could do the same thing there. Just give them a courtesy notice and, you know, and ask them for an inspection.
And my guess is that, you know, those, you said 13, 16 that you targeted, those 13 people, they knew they had a problem, okay? You just told them like, okay, come on, you know, get this done. You kind of just, you know, put the impetus in for them to get it done. So that's probably all that's necessary. I think this could work, but we have to be careful. And I'll say this, I say this all the time, be careful about overreach, okay? You know, that sticker can be, if, you know, we can reserve the right to require an inspection, and, you know, so like what Dave is talking about, we see some rusted one that's falling apart. Well, that one doesn't look very operative. It might work, okay? So fine, then, we'll give you a sticker, and we won't see you again for two years. Or maybe, you know, for equal, to keep everything equal, we have to do everyone in the city. I mean, that's going to be a lot more work. I don't know how much pushback you're going to get. I mean, you know, people will probably resent the intrusion, particularly, you know, again, I don't own a lift, but if I just bought a brand-new lift, I'm like, what the hell, you guys don't hear? Can I, this works, go away, you know? It's warranted for whatever years, and I don't need to hear. So, you know, I'm not sure. How do we do it without alienating a bunch of the citizens?
Don't you need permits to put a boat lift and all that? So obviously, maybe permits on properties like Dave's within the last five years, 10 years, whatever, those are automatically stickered because we know they're fine. But it's the ones that maybe are outside of that range or never had a permit because it was before the time you needed permit. Those are ones maybe you start with inspecting. And I don't think that, I mean, I think, I like the idea during a hurricane to secure, but, and we've done that, and we've also, what was it, barrier? I don't know, whichever one everybody evacuated for. When we came back, it popped the chains we had on. So I mean, at that point, if it's a real hurricane, it's going to come through, and no matter what you do is going to prevent it. But it's a good idea, we still do it. But I don't think you can force people to do that part.
I'm above that, and owner of a boat, but what's your liability when your boat takes off in a hurricane? Are you liable for floating around banging people's houses?
We have insurance.
Okay, so there's your answer. So I mean, it's to their benefit, but if, you know, like anything else, if somebody chooses to be somewhat reckless...
Is that the same, like, if my car was parked in my driveway and flooded off and hit Glenn's mailbox and tore it down?
Yeah, I mean, do you have to anchor it? You know, is it prudent, maybe, if, you know, a flood is coming to move it to higher ground? Sure, but maybe you can't do it. You know, I had a car that, when we had the Irma come through, I was not able to move that car, okay? It was just not able to be moved. It was in my garage, and thank God we didn't get any water. But that was it, I couldn't move it. Okay, move it now, but I couldn't move it then. And, you know, whatever, maybe the person's not even here. I mean, we got a lot of part-time residents, so, you know, they could conceivably be in their summer home, and hurricane's blowing through, so. But I, you know, I think if we don't overreach, this works, so.
I have one more comment about this. We like to pick on the tree boat a lot, but I will say, on a positive note, that same person has a brand spanking new seawall and sea cap.
What about the dock, that was half in the water too? That's next year's project.
He's actually working on his dock.
I'm trying to figure this out. So you get a really nice dock, and a really nice sea cap, and you have a boat that has a tree coming out of there.
Maybe they're owners.
Okay. Again, they can do what they want, but do it well, you know?
Well, and then going with Leslie's point, these yellow highlighted may, there's another one a few pages later, D of whatever section they're in, but capital D, that's also highlighted. That may help with the derelict dock seawall, bulkhead, just basically saying if it's dangerous causing unreasonable risk of bodily injury to any person who may walk there on, like that one I told you, Dave, that was half, or, sorry, Dave, Lynn, that was half in the water that you were talking about too. Like, that would be a perfect example. That it has to be repaired or removed. So maybe putting these two passages in our ordinance or whatnot would be a good start, and then we can go from there and tweak it as problems arise with it.
Consensus is to, well, what, Dave, you would work with Fred to maybe craft some addition here? Is that what you'd like?
I think so, yes. I've got enough information here where I believe we can come up with something reasonable that's not too imposing on the citizens, but make it clear that we are looking out for everyone's safety.
Can you do comment, can you put something together and either, because I don't want to vote on it like at the next meeting. Is it something we can break to the next work session, or is this something you feel so...
No, I think that this is a, I'd rather present it in a second work session, and we hash it out before it ever goes to council.
That's the right way to do it.
Yeah, Mayor, council, just, Fred and I are working on the planning boards, chapter 30 right now, so, and we've got some modifications to it. So before we even bring that to the council, we would just add whatever additional modifications. There's no sense doing it twice, I just won't say.
Heard your comments. You know, I think this could work if, as long as it's not overreaching. And obviously, you know, when we're doing code, you know, we cannot be on people's property unless they invite you on, so we don't want to be going heavy-handed. I mean, if you can see that the planks are missing, the boards are missing from a dock, from the water, you're fine. But you can't go and take advantage of them on their property or something like that, because that would get us into major problems.
Right, and some neighbors will say, hey, come in my backyard, look at this, so.
All right, so we'll move, consensus is to move forward in the way we just described, correct? Anyone's objecting? Okay, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't do it. I promised I was going to do it. Citizens, any comments? Okay, then consensus is to move forward. All right. Discussion of section 2-56, Mayor. B, the mayor shall preside over all work sessions, regular, special, and emergency meetings of the city council, and shall at all times maintain and preserve strict order and decorum in each meeting. This is brought by Vice Mayor David Gaddis. Order: State of peace, freedom from confused or unruly behavior, and respect for law or proper authority; a specific rule, regulation, or authoritative direction, as per Marion Webster's fictionary; decorum is propriety and good taste in conduct and our appearance; the conversations of polite conventions, I'm sorry, polite behavior, Marion Webster. I'm turning it over to you, Mr. Gaddis, with one caveat. I read this. I'm hoping that we're doing this in a constructive manner, and that's the way I want to take it, and let's go forward.
Of course. Basically, the last council meeting, I really just thought that it didn't go in the right direction. I believe that we're all better than the way we behaved. I'm not picking on anyone in particular. I'm going to say "we" because we were all there and we all participated in the meeting. However, I will say that it's up to the chair to control those meetings. However, uh, I, I will say that it's up to the chair to control those meetings, and I, as, as much as I hate to bring it up, I, I kind of felt like the chair, um, did not, did not tone us back, didn't keep us under control and, and keep us with that order and decorum that the charter calls for. Sometimes we do get in the heat of conversations, and sometimes things do get out of control. But as, uh, section two dash fifty-six calls out, it's up to the mayor to, to dial it back and, and to help us get through this in a calm, orderly fashion. Uh, I felt like last week's meeting was anything but calm, and, uh, I, I think that we're all much better than what happened last week. Uh, and so I'm asking this council and the mayor to have an open conversation of how we can, we can actually get along better, uh, because if we're not, if we're not able to work together as a group, how are we ever going to be able to work with people out there? Uh, so, uh, that's, that's my kickoff speech, and, uh, I hope everyone has something good to say and constructive.
I would like to comment, um, I think one of the things that could help these meetings run just a little bit smoother better is that we're consistent with our rules. I mean, at one point, you know, it was stated you don't care about citizens' comments, and now they do care. At one point, there was no clapping, laughing, talking from the audience, but it depends on who's doing it out there that we allow it. At one point, it was stated that nobody needs to call out specific council members, but once again, it depends on who's doing that, that it's allowed. So I just get really confused with all the rules continuing to change, even down to the point where when I'm making motion, I never ask at the end a point final comment. Vice Mayor Ga- uh, Gaddis made a motion tonight, same thing, defer to the city mayor, and you ask him for his last comment. Um, I'm just curious as to why the rules seem really, really different, that's all. I just think if we are consistent with everyone, then that might help things run a little smoother.
Let me cut in a bit here, and then I'll come back and we're gonna go around. First off, Dave, congratulations and thank you for bringing the topic up, so that's on my mind, and thank you for the way you handled it in a professional manner, okay? I mean, I'm just gonna take care of a couple of technical things, and I'd like to get into something a bit, a bitter anchor. Rita Swob, I always come back to you on asking the question, no, I don't, so go back and watch the tape and show me which one I missed you on, okay? Because I always ask it, and you typically say, call the question, which by the way, is an inappropriate response. I know I have to call the question, you just have to say, no final comments. Tonight, by the way, is a work session, so there is no real, we, we, there is no last comment to be made on a work session, this is just a discussion. But I will always come back to you, and if I don't, before I call the question, raise your hand and just say, you missed me, I have one last comment. The rule is, the person who makes the motion gets the last word. Now sometimes, that person will put in the last word, and I don't, I never, somebody said the other time, and I, you know, again, I'm not mad, I'm not, but I take offense when somebody says, you cut off discussion, I never cut off discussion. I never call the question, I called the question to read it, but I don't cut it off. I'll cut it off if somebody's monopolizing it, and I've been cut off myself. Jody Shirley one time said, is, like, anybody else get to talk? And I'm like, yeah, sorry about that, okay? 'Cause you do, somebody, Dave said, you get in the heat of the moment, okay? And Rita, you're shaking your head right now, so that's one of the things we're gonna talk about, which is, Glenn, the body language, okay? 'Cause that's another thing that's indecorious, and we're gonna, I'm gonna talk about it, okay? So I have the floor now, and I'm gonna talk, and then you're gonna get a chance to talk. Everybody's gonna talk, got no place to go tonight, okay? So, in terms of the rules, okay? The rules are the rules, they're to be enforced by everyone, and Dave, I'm gonna do something which takes a real man to do, I'm gonna admit that I was wrong in the last meeting on some of the stuff I did and the way some of the stuff was handled, but I'll also agree with you that every, pretty much everybody, not everybody, there might be one person here who wasn't at fault, but everybody over the group of meetings has contributed to the indecorious behavior. And I agree with you one hundred percent, we can do better. This council has six more months together, then it may come back exactly as it is now, or there might be new people here, but there might be changes, whatever, but for six more months, we gotta do the city's business, and we can do it better than we're doing it. And I agree with you. I disagree with one thing, though, that you said, and I, I do wanna highlight that, okay? You're absolutely correct on what section two dash fifty-six says, um, but, give me a second. Fred, I'm gonna paraphrase you, even though you didn't speak to this issue, Fred Riley always tells us, you guys make it complicated, more complicated sometimes than it has to be, Fred says that all the time to us. So section two dash fifty-six talks about decorum, and I don't know why that, you know, maybe didn't make it here, but I think it is something that, if we're gonna have this discussion, I think we really want to review this a little bit, because, um, some of the issues that we have, and my ability to control this, I do my best, um, goes back to what some people said, okay? So, it's a short thing, and I wanna read it. Decorum. Council members, this isn't speaking to the mayor, but I am a member of the council, but it says council members. While the city council is in session, the council members shall preserve order and decorum. See, we're in this together, all of us, okay? And a council member shall not by conversation or otherwise delay or interrupt proceedings or peace of the city council, disturb any council member while speaking, or refuse to obey the orders of the city council or the presiding officers. Now, I've had, and I'm not gonna, we're not using names, because Dave did this unbelievably professionally, and again, my, my kudos to how he handled this, 'cause this is gonna turn into another match. We've had people tell me I don't care about Robert's rules of order, have interrupted others, which causes them to fight back, myself included. We had it happen last meeting with somebody. People who don't request permission to speak, just start speaking, and again, this is a work session, you can go ahead and speak, but on a council meeting, we, you look to me, you raise your hand, you can say mayor, you can say Joe, you can just raise your hand. I, Frank, I just, I never wanna play poker against you, we should never play poker against you. I know when you wanna talk, I can just see it in your eyes, and like, Frank, I know you wanna say something, and I turn to you and I'm like, go ahead. You know, I try to go through the group first, and then come back a second time, third time, however many times it is. Then we have to go out to the audience, we have some people who persistently wanna call questions before the audience gets to speak, it's illegal, I can't do it. So it's delaying the meteophy, it's causing fighting, it's causing problems, I wish you would stop. We can't do it. The, the public has the right to speak. So it's everybody's job here, if you see something going on in the audience and you don't like it, call it, call the point of order. And if I don't give you the ruling you want on a point of order, there's an appeal process, use it. But just remember something. As an example, let's say John Doe's in the audience, and he is, well, we had somebody doing this, I didn't even know what the person was, making noise on a computer over and over again, making the thing ringing. And I said something, finally, the sheriff had asked him to step outside and turn it off. You know, anybody could do that, it doesn't have to be me, it's wrong. One time is an accident, the sixth time you're disrupting the council session. So, we're all in this together, I promise I will do my best, personally, and also trying to control things, but I need everyone's help. When somebody says, I don't care, and I'm not saying who the person is, they're on the tape, so look at them, I don't care about Robert's rules of order, I call a point of order as mayor, and you talk over me and say, I'm gonna keep talking to the point that I have to stop the meeting and call Fred Riley and Lynn Reeves into the office so that we can dispatch the sheriff to remove the person, that's the next step. That's nonsense, why did we get to that point? It just says, if I ask you to stop, stop. If you don't like the way I'm handling things, March fifteenth, I think, is the election? Vote me out. You can do it. So that's, that's what I wanna say, we're in this together, I will do my promise, Dave, I will do my part, if everyone al- also joins me and does their part. And be consistent, I can get, I can go through consistency, I have a whole list of stuff where I can do it, but we're not personally attacking people, so I'm just talking how we can do it better. I think if we follow that, and follow the mayor rule, we're in this together. Robin?
I agree with Rita one hundred percent, that rules should be followed the same every time. I've said this so many times about the Bellar Shores issue, about everything, what's good for the goose and good for the gander, so I'm completely in support of that. And I will say on my point, a couple times seeing rules like the audience clapping, and I know one of the first meetings, she told us, you're allowed to do a point of order and stop, but I'll be honest, I have no problem yelling at you guys to stop yelling at each other, but I'm a little bit more shy of yelling at somebody in the audience, hey, stop clapping, just, that's just me, I own that, that I'm not aggressive enough, and I'll try to, try to do that more, but, um...
Robin, can I, do you mind if I just interject something? You don't have to tell them, you just tell me, you just pull the point of order and say, we have audience clapping, it's my job then to say, is, first, is it well-founded? Is there somebody clapping? And then I can say, look, please refrain, we're not throwing you out, 'cause you, listen, sometimes we can carry away with our emotions. I'm guilty, I clapped last time, I did one clap, it was a, Frank, bank card made something that I thought was very funny, okay? I shouldn't have done that, okay? But neither should people back there be opening up Coke cans and banging things and talking. We hear it, I see it all, that's why I sit in the middle here, I see what goes on in that corner, this corner, I hear it, it comes out on the tape, we see what's going on, but I hate to say it, right now, normally in the past, we've had issues sometimes with the citizens, it's us right now, okay? Go ahead, Robin.
Um, no, so I agree that all the rules should be uniform. Um, I do think that we have trouble getting along sometimes, and I think we look rigid. I really try not to do that, I know I've had beefs with some of you, with Glenn, and I try to look at your opinion objectively, like, you know, the dock, I'm sure if I really wanted to, I could have torn it all apart just to be mean, but you were right, and even, you know, no matter what, I'm gonna agree with you, you're right. And I take it like I do, and someone explained this to me of how I view these meetings, it's kinda like in medicine, I'm a surgeon, if I work with a cardiologist and I just cannot stand that person, I just cannot stand him as a fellow human being, I'm still gonna work very close with them to save that person's life and do what I gotta do, that's right, to help that person. I don't have to be his friend, but I have to do it right, so I see it as the same way. I guess the, this analogy, the city's my patient, and I'm trying to do whatever I can to work with all of you to make our patient better. So, and I feel that way, I mean, we may not, after we're all out of office, go out and hang out and drink a beer, but I'm also not gonna try to run it over with my car, so I mean, you see what I'm saying? So my whole point is, is can't we just all get along for the meetings? We don't have to like each other outside, and just try to work together, do what's best for the city regardless of our personal feelings.
Citizens, would anybody like to comment? Back to council, Dave, it was yours, you go around a second time if you'd like.
Sure. Um, another thing that I'd like to add is, is right now, we look pretty darn bad to all of Pinellas County. I, I speak to people all, all across the county, and I've spoken to several of the mayors, and everyone is asking me, what's going on at Bellar Beach, and why are your meetings so crazy? It's imperative that we fix this, and it's not something we can write down, we can't write a policy, we can't, we can't make it a rule, but it's something that you know, we all know that we need to do this to straighten this out. I think that if we're able to communicate with each other in a civil, decent manner, our meetings are gonna go much, much faster, we're not gonna have to be here till midnight to get simple things done, because at the end of the day, every single issue comes down to a yes or no vote, and we just need to have a civil conversation, debate it, vote on it, and then go home, and that's, that's what it's all about. Again, what we do up here is reflected out there, the more we do it up here, the more it's gonna occur out there, and eventually it's gonna spread throughout the city. I don't want that for my city, I love this city, it's a beautiful place, we've got great friends and neighbors here, and, uh, I don't, I don't wanna be fighting with, with anyone over what goes on, yeah, other than just that simple disagreement. Uh, that's, that's my final round of comments.
Dave, that's the way it's supposed to be, I cannot disagree with any of that, but I have one thing more, if you don't mind. Not just this incumbent on the council here, okay? You know, I don't know that everybody knows this, I know probably people here, if they're regulars, I think they know this probably, but everybody up here on this council serves free of charge, they don't pay for this. So when people take to social media, when people form groups, bash the people up here, that's not a real nice thing, that's not gonna engender a lot of positivity, uh, nor is doing press conferences and other stuff. So all I'm gonna say is, it doesn't just end when you leave the door here, you can go home in the car ride and say, man, I don't like that lady or that guy, that's fine, nobody hears that. But if you hold a press conference, or you go on social media, we're gonna see that. As I always said to people, I didn't become mayor without having a lot of eyes and ears in the town, I hear stuff, so does everybody else, so, say, what's the golden rule, treat others as you want them to treat you, I mean, it boils down to that. Dave, you got my commitment, I'll do my best, and I'd like to hear that commitment from everybody else over here, and if we got that, I think we could have better meetings and to start, and we could show them how it can be done, because we're doing it right now. So, I mean...
Well, to go to what you said, I mean, I agree, that's not favorable to we even have somebody bashing you on social media, but fortunately that's the job we took on in public office, I mean, look at, you know, the federal level, I mean, no matter what they do, somebody's either gonna love them or hate them, they're never gonna make everybody happy, so you just have to have a thick skin with that. Do I think it's right? No. Do I think a sixth grade school girl, schoolboy can eat? Yes, but it is what it is, so we just have to have a thicker skin, so I will definitely commit, and I think I've kind of been doing this, but I will do it more if that's what needs to be done to work better with everybody, and, uh, you know, the next meeting, all hard feelings get wiped clean, we start anew fresh, we keep going, and we can get along.
Thank you, Robin. Anyone else like to speak? Dave, is that...
Look, I've been a starter, I've set my pace, thank you very much, and thank you for the way you brought this up, and again, this is the way it can be, so, and you can disagree, you can disagree, but we get it professionally. All right, item number three then, is discussion to clarify the protocol of passing the gavel, this is brought by council member Gunn, um, I hope the phone is set up properly so we can hear him, it sounded pretty good before. So this says, once the gavel is passed, it is not returned to the regular chair until the item of business motion has been disposed of or concluded. Glenn?
Yes, thank you. Uh, at the last council session, the, uh, the mayor exercised his, his new, uh, the new protocol of being the pass gavel, and it kinda surprised me when after making the motion, the gavel was passed right back, and I'm not quite sure if that was the intent of the change to the charter, and so I did some, uh, some research on it, and most of the forums I looked at, basically jacked up with this thing, that, uh, once a, uh, motion is, if the gavel is passed, but adding a motion or second that you made by the chair, the basis is concluded or, uh, disposed of before the gavel is passed back to the chair, and I think that the basic, uh, thinking and logic behind that is basically because the chair has proposed a motion or a second, that he's basically stayed there, he's never paid on this, and, uh, and he's no longer partial to, uh, the different side. So I think that's backwards wise, and I just wanna clarify that, that that's the second, that Glenn, the gavel is passed to Vice Mayor or whoever, he disposed of that goodness, and then the gavel is passed back. And that's all that I, my neck, but, but again, I look at the forums, and there are references to, Rob's new, new rules, and, uh, there's a page in slide where I didn't spend much time looking at those.
Thank you, Glenn, thank you for bringing this up also, and the way you presented that. Um, let me clarify something, 'cause maybe it got missed, or it wasn't noticed properly. I remember the motion very well, it was because of the consent agenda, and I had said, um, we were talking, first off, the motion that was on the floor was to pass the agenda, and actually I think I brought it with me, um, I did. And so we had the, um, the motion was the approval of the agenda, that was the main motion, I forgot who made it, I believe it was Leslie Nataro, but correct me if I'm wrong, it doesn't really matter, but that was the motion, the main motion. I had an issue with, there were several items that, on the consent agenda, that I thought required by law, the exposure to citizen comments, so I said, I'm not gonna let this council do something that potentially could cause an illegal problem, because if you don't take citizen comments when you're supposed to, it could be a void action of the council. So I said, let's not go down there, I'll make the motion. So my motion, Glenn, was to amend the agenda, simply to amend the agenda by moving certain items out of the consent agenda into the regular agenda. I passed the gavel upon a second with that, we had our debate, that motion, my motion to amend the agenda, and then the gavel stayed with Dave Gaddis, Dave called that question, and got the vote, it was approved, and then he passed the gavel back to me, and then we went back to the main thing, which was the approval of the agenda as amended. So it did not get immediately passed back to me, Dave called that question, in fact, I remember because he kinda turned to me and kinda had a little, almost a whisper kind of thing on, on the, the proper, you know, question and how it had to be called, so that's what happened the last time, so, um, but I don't disagree, uh, our charter actually addresses this, so it's not something we have to, um, really deal with, it says in two point zero four five A, uh, mayor, I'm not gonna read all things, it just says, the presiding officer shall vote on matters as a regular member of council, but shall not move or second a motion unless the presiding officer passes the gavel to the most senior council member who will temporarily chair the meeting, that's what it says, so, um...
I think part of the problem also was, uh, that was my first time.
Yep.
Uh, and, um, I got a little confused, uh, there were a lot of things going on all at one time, and, uh, yeah, I kinda blew that one, but, uh, so that probably did...
Well, you handled it right, did you, you handled the thing right, you just had it western empty handed.
Yeah, that, that probably did cause a little bit of confusion, but I did not really sense that anything was, uh, was done improperly as far as, um, handing the gavel back. I, Glenn, did you have something that you thought in particular that, that just wasn't right, any particular instance, an example or something that you could kind of refresh our memories about, because I, I don't remember that.
Yeah, no, I, you've explained that, and maybe while within the technical letter of the, the text there, I think where things... ten there, I think where things got off the rails is obviously those things that were pulled from the consent agenda or highly opinionated or whatever. And that's what we got into all the discussions. So, that maybe, maybe we could have followed through and just asked it back. But your explanation is all important. And I accept that. Obviously, we understand what the intention is and we'll be looking for that in the future.
And if there's, listen, folks, I'm looking out for you. I have multiple times told this council, "You can't do it this way. You know, it's not right," or what have you. If I sense something's wrong, I hit it with that, okay? If there is an irregularity, you know, Dave just said something. It was his first time. Wow, there's a lot going on. Yeah, there is. There's a lot going on. You're paying attention to the council. You're paying attention to the citizens. You're looking for, so if you're trying to think about the next thing you're going to say, yeah, you know, it's not simple. And, and I thought Dave did fine. He had a question. And just so you know, there's nothing stopping me from providing you a piece of advice if there's something you're uncertain about. And I will always do that. I'm not going to let you sit here and swing. That's not what we're trying to do. So, I think we handled it right. It should have stayed with him for the actual calling of the agenda. That wasn't my motion. That, as I, and I, I don't have my notes, but I think it was Leslie Nataro's. I'm sure the city clerk has who made that motion. I thought Leslie made the motion to move the agenda in last time. It doesn't matter. But it wasn't me. I know that. So, but I think we're all in agreement. If I make a motion, I probably won't make too many seconds. But if I make a motion, I'm going to, I'm going to pass that gavel over. We did it before. We did it on Dave's motion. I had to recuse myself and we passed it to Leslie. So, and it worked fine. So, and then when Leslie finished that item, I actually left the room. She passed it back to me. So, I think we're doing it right. But Glenn, if there's a problem, if there's an irregularity, stop that. That's a point of order or a point of information that I would love to have called. Because we need to resolve that on the spot. Because if we, I mean, if, if we get the agenda wrong, then everything we do thereafter is just a waste of our time, you know? So, yeah, I mean, please call it. I think we're in agreement. Unless somebody has a different opinion. Citizens?
I think so.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Glenn. Glenn, you have the floor.
Yeah, I have it.
I'm sorry. Please.
He's not having a break.
Okay. So, you're good, Glenn?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. Citizens, any comments on this? Bring it back to...
I already did that last one.
I'm sorry.
I feel like we're in a COVID environment here.
You know, Glenn, I'm going to the citizens and then I'm going to come back to you, okay? I don't have any citizen comments. So, back to you and council with you getting the last, well, there's no last word. It's your motion. If you satisfied, tell us now you want to proceed. If there's anything we need to do further other than keeping an eye on it. I think we're all in agreement. But whatever you have else.
Well, just pulling back to the previous item, interesting, just a, something to ponder at a later time is, like, right now, with the lax stat, as your business is being transacted very cordially, very simply, moving forward at a good clip here, and you have to get into some of these council meetings and it gets off the rails. And when it's, when we, when we conduct this as well, it's good. When we conduct this poorly and badly, it's very bad. So, I guess the question of all is, what's the difference and where do we get off the rails of this thing? And I think it's just, maybe we, we state our, our logical case. We have an opportunity to express a little opinion. But then we just keep going on and on with expressing opinions. And a lot of times when, I know when I called the question or somebody else called the question, it's to stop the endless debate or opinions. Because I, I think it's quite apparent that people's minds aren't going to change with what's going on. So, let's just call the question and get the vote over. And so that we can move on and fresh business and keep moving.
And Glenn, I don't...
I, I think, you know, question asked, question answered. I, that's kind of the way I look at this. Not everything's going to go my way. And I think everybody comes with a bad opinion. That you have the opportunity, you state your case, state the logic and the facts, state the opinions. And at the end of the day, when the vote's taken, you have your day. Just because it didn't go your way doesn't mean that you have failed or nobody was listening. It's just, it didn't charity the day. So, it's, it's full on.
Glenn, the, there's no problem with making a motion to call the question after the citizens have spoken. There's a big problem making it before. I can't grant that. What you're asking me to do is first ask for an illegal vote, which I'm not going to do. I'm not going to do that. I will stop the meeting and I will not do that. I will not make the council vote on something that's illegal. The, the Florida laws say that the citizens have the right to speak on any item that we vote on. Now, if we had something, for example, like the budget, we don't want to cut any corners here, okay? Like the budget, we've had multiple meetings where citizens have had multiple times for input. We actually could restrict the citizens' comments. We don't. We err on the side of caution. And I mean, Glenn, to your point, we've had some pretty long presentations with certain people. We're not getting into it. But here's the deal. If this council wants to put a time limit, you can't just say, "You can't talk." Right? That's not something that the presiding officer can make that decision. We're going to run into major problems if people start cutting off people's conversation. But we can put a limit, okay? We put a limit on citizens at three minutes. Robert's rules of order, generally, I think the House of Representatives and these other places, unless you're filibustering things like nine, nine or 12 minutes, we could say, "You've got nine minutes and that's it." Now, that makes Patty's job a little tougher because she has to time everybody. But that would stop somebody from doing an exceedingly long presentation. We can change that ordinance if we want. I have no problem with it. And then everybody will be held to the same rules. Right now, we do not have a time limit. And Robert, just so you know, Robert's rules of order generally calls for 12 minutes for a person to speak. We don't get too many people to speak 12 minutes. But sometimes we do. But, you know, if, if you made a presentation, we want you to make the presentation. But if this council feels that they want to limit it, then let's put it up for an adjustment or a modification to the, to the thing. We're, we're really off topic over here, but I think it's a valid point. And maybe it's something that should be brought up again if we want to talk about it. If we want to put a time limit on the council members, we absolutely can do that.
I don't think we need to get like that and put the time limit. But, you know, I kind of agree with Glenn. Sometimes we just keep going around and around and around. We get nowhere. But I think the solution is, instead of saying, "Call the question," if you maybe say, "Let's get to citizen comments," maybe that will kind of pause our endless tirade. And we can at least hear from the citizens. And then afterwards, if we need more discussion, we can. But that maybe, I don't think we should limit anybody.
See, problem, that's my problem is with, with me to say, "Well, okay, sorry, you guys can't talk." I have to, I can't cut off the council's ability to speak. You can sit here and, you're not breaking a rule, as long as you're not insulting a person or doing anything that's breaking our code, you know, our code, our decorum. You can talk. You theoretically could talk all night. Now, we can say, "Okay, you know, we're not going to go to midnight. We've heard it. We got it." But you can't put, not me, not the next presiding officer, you can't put that on us because then we're making arbitrary decisions.
Well, I'm not talking about you.
Or get ourselves in trouble.
I'm not talking about you.
No, I'm talking about anybody having to make that call saying, "Okay, yeah, sure. You know what, Robin? Good point. Yeah, we've talked enough. Let's..." Maybe somebody else wants to say more.
But that's the idea. You say, "Hey, I think it's time to go to..." Like, let's say, instead of I saying, "Let's call a question," and be in violation, say, "Hey, you know, why don't we tone it down? Let's hear from the citizens." But if somebody, if like Leslie's like, "Oh, wait, I want to say something." Like, "Okay, anybody else want to say anything? We can go to the citizens." You know, not saying, "Shut up. Stop talking. We're talking to citizens." It's just a suggestion.
We have that flexibility.
That's what I'm saying. Instead of trying to, "Let's call the question," like...
But if somebody really wants to be heard, I, I just want to think it, just so clear. If you want to be heard, the mic is here and you really can talk as long as you want. We have to take a limit, but you can go as long as you want. And you're, Robin's right. I mean, you make a point. We're all trying to convince people. We're trying to do what's that we, everybody here is trying to do what's best for the city, okay? In their minds.
No, no, nobody argues for, for questions when, when the code call is, gets off track. And you corrected me several times on that. And I appreciate it. And that, that was the right call at the time. But when you start making cheap comments about, "Who's a lawyer? You should have loved her there." Or, "Who's lying boxes?" That's where it gets off track. And I'm, I'm saying it now because I'm, I'm calling, calling it the way I see it. And any, anytime, like, you call the correct code call, you're doing the right thing. You're doing your job. And things keep moving along. But when things start getting off track or cheap shots or changing opinions or whatever, that's where, that's where the decorum changes.
And I agree with that. I agree with you, Glenn, with that. But I think that's, instead of inciting war by saying, "Call and question," that's when everybody, like Dave's done before and I've done it, like, "Okay, everyone, let's calm down. Let's take a timeout. Everyone take a step back. And then let's get back on track and let's talk to the citizens."
And Glenn, you know, we're trying to avoid individual comments, but you made some about me. And then that's fine. You know, I'll also tell you that sitting here making hand gestures that, you know, I guess supposed to be speeded up or that, that's inappropriate. It's just inappropriate. Question whether I'm a licensed lawyer. Come on the Florida website. Please check it. I'm a lawyer in good standing, okay? If I wasn't, I'd be arrested. Those three guys back there could arrest me for practicing. So, you know, these are cheap shots. They're all cheap shots, okay? We've gotten into this gutter. And again, we're, we're back on topic too. So, I'm going to try and bring us back to number three. But Dave has brought it up. He brought it up in a very nice manner. I think we all agreed to try and get along better. We're doing very well so far tonight. And we can do it. Let's see if we will do it, okay? I, I, you know, I'm going to do my best and I hope everyone else will join me.
I'd like to add something to that also. I, I think another part of the problem we have with our regular council meetings is we try to make a decision without knowing, without really knowing, I don't, I'm trying to figure out the best way to say it. Basically, I walk into every one of those meetings knowing how I'm going to vote. Occasionally, somebody will change my mind. However, it may take two minutes. It may take an hour and a half. On, on these topics that are, what I'm going to consider maybe controversial because it's, it's, we're at stalemate almost, these are things that I think that we should all hash out in these work sessions. We should not be having these, these knockdown, dragout arguments over a topic at our regular council meetings. This is a much more calm environment. We don't have a large crowd sitting out there that's, that's ready to get in the fight. And basically, we should be able to have a rational debate in a work session. So that whenever we come to regular council, you know, it's time to vote, it's a very short discussion. Yes, we give the citizens the opportunity to speak, but we've already had our debate. If they say something that's changed our minds, well, they may, that's room for more discussion during that agenda item. But I, I just think that we're doing it backwards. That we're not taking advantage of these work sessions like we should be. Because basically, you put on your blue jeans and your dirty shirt and you come in here and you do get out in the work session. And then whenever it's a regular council meeting, you sit up straight and we all respect one another and we act like the city council. And that's, that's all I want to see.
Well, to that end, Dave, I mean, when we get to number four, there's an item that I could have brought up on the council session. And I brought it up to there. So, to the extent that any, you know, we drive a lot of these items. Now, the city manager drives a lot of items still. You know, he puts the majority of the items on our agenda. So, to the extent that Lynn thinks some of this can be debated, you know, you can utilize work sessions. I mean, now, I like that idea that we hash some of this stuff out. But keep in mind too, I think some people do play for the audience. And there is a certain, you know, the reporters are here and the cameras are here. And, you know, so tone it down. That's what you're saying. And I think it's a good idea. And then we're going to have better and more productive meetings. You still can get your point, okay? I made my point tonight about the taxes. Robin made her point. You made yours. Leslie made hers. And we got it done. You know, it could be something similar to that. Again, I'll try it. But the disrespect, you know, and it, I'm guilty of it. And I'm also guilty of receiving it from a lot of people. And it can stop. But obviously, if somebody disrespects someone, then they disrespect back and it devolves. And that's what we had last time. You know, so...
I'll add one more thing to that. As chair, unfortunately, you have, you have more responsibility than the rest of us. I know it's hard not to fight back and not to disrespect somebody. But as chair, you have to control not only the person who's doing it, but you also have to control the person receiving it. And many times, that's you. Many times, that's others. And I, I know it's hard, but you got to stay calm. And we have to stay calm in these meetings. We, we just look really bad. I'm, I'm tired of talking about it. I'm ready to Google them.
Yeah, we kind of got off track because we went backwards. So, let's try and move forward. Do we have anything more on passing the gavel? So, we think it's being done. We think we're all in agreement with what has to happen. Absolutely. There's seven people on council. If there's ever, not only with the gavel, but any other protocol. I mean, one time, I think I went out of order. You know, like Dave said, it's not easy, okay? I got all these stuff up here. I got little marks. You know, if I forget to go to the citizens, please, someone remind me, "Joe, you forgot to go to the citizens." I'm not going to be insulted. I'm going to say, "Thank you." Because, you know, I don't feel like some citizen come the next day and say, "I want to talk and I didn't have my opportunity." Citizens, if I forget to go to the citizens, like, wake me. I'll remember what I did. That used to happen a lot, you know, in the past. And sometimes in council meetings, some of the ones that I saw in the past, it just happens. It's just the way it goes. Person up here is not perfect by any means. All right, let's move on to item number four then. This is my item. And we have a discussion of code enforcement hours, direction to deputy, communications, best practices, priorities, council firsthand field observation, and any other applicable items, as I should have said. This is the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office Community Police Department Code Enforcement. I had a very direct discussion of this a couple of meetings ago. And I'm not going to do that. We're going to continue with the spirit of doing this in a professional manner. The reason why I brought this is because there has been some, at least some information that I've received regarding the code with regard to where our city manager is taking this. And I want to make sure that it's the direction that this council wants to go in. And that's the direction that the city should be going in, okay? I have some concerns. These are not directed as a knock against Lynn Reeves. It's to make sure that we're all on the same page. I'm not picking on Glenn Gunn, but I'm going to use a quote that he made a while ago when I received a series of complaints from one citizen who was building a house. Didn't like the fact that contractors were parking on the road, okay? And she was complaining about the city manager. And the city manager and I had several comments. I didn't feel that the city manager had done anything improperly, okay? I, I am fair, all right? He didn't do anything wrong. Lynn and I had that conversation. Lynn knows exactly what I'm talking about. And, but there was complaints about, you know, about what was going on. And Glenn said, "Well, the buck stops with me. I brought it up to council." I want to correct that tonight because the buck does not stop with me. I'm not a sworn mayor. I'm not the leader of this city. The buck stops with all of us. If I get complaints that we're being too heavy-handed or we're being too light-handed, then that's, that's going to come back to council. If I get an individual complaint, I do my best to investigate it, including spending, in one case, two hours with a person on one block who was just totally screaming to me about the city manager's performance. And I spent some time with that person, okay? And we went through it. And the problem got corrected. It was that simple. So, it's not here to rehash problems. It's to figure out where we're going. So, here's where we're at right now, okay? We had code being done in about eight hours a week. And we started out with code being done in 12 hours a week. Then we got down to eight hours a week. And now Lynn is proposing that code be done within 20 hours a week. So, we're all over the place, okay? What is the optimal level for a city of our size? That's my question. I believe Captain Myers here is going to represent the sheriff tonight. We give direction to the sheriff. And I think that might be something that is maybe not known or not, not being observed well. The city manager reports to the city council. So, it's our job to tell the city manager what we're looking for. And we're supposed to know what the citizens are looking for. Because the citizens are above all of us, right? It's you folks that we're working for. So, you're telling us, "Hey, we like Bellar Beach. It's a pretty city. Keep it pretty." There's a fine line between keeping it a pretty city and going around and busting everyone's chops. Because we got a really complicated code. You leave a bicycle in your front yard for more than 24 hours, you're in violation of our code. You want some sense for that? Don't you dare do that in my name as mayor. Because I'm not going to tell you that I think that that's a good idea. So, some of these things we need to say as the city council, where's our focus? We know what the focus is, folks. And the focus is forever in Bellar Beach. Short-term rentals, parks... Beach. Short-term rentals, parking cars on grasses, rusty boats and trailers and all kinds of debris in the yards and construction, that's not supposed to happen, that's what we're talking about. That's what the big prime focus, overgrown yards, overgrown grass, overgrown shrubs, that's what code should be out there doing. It's a learning experience. Lynn Reeves just told us about the voting thing. 16 people cited, not cited, but given courtesy notices, 13 of them on their own take care of it. That's what you get if you're nice to people. And that's the way I would like to see code enforced. Since Danny Doherty's taken over, we've had an excellent, excellent relationship with the citizens. I receive very few calls and I'm the one who's gonna usually get them. Sometimes Lynn gets them, but most of the times, it's gonna be me. And he's been spot on with his enforcement. Now, there's something quite disturbing that I heard and I wanna make sure that it's not happening, okay? I'm hearing that Danny is being told or discouraged from speaking to the mayor and to other council members. That needs to stop. Danny is an employee of the PCSO, as is every one of the gentlemen in the back and the mayor and everybody else has a right to speak to them. I'm not speaking to people on duty. And if people wanna speak to me, I think I'm entitled to that as the mayor. I think I'm entitled to get some information about my city. It's your money that I'm spending, so I wanna know how code is going. To that end, I'm gonna propose tonight that as part of our Pinellas Sheriff's presentation, we typically get the crime presentation, I would like our code officer to come in. We typically get a code report. You may not be able to see it from there, but you know what it looks like. That's our code report. Sometimes it's in our package, sometimes it's on our desk and it gives all the code things that happened for the month. It's prepared by the sheriff. From a prepared internal, but the sheriff gives the information. I'd like the sheriff to come up so that we can talk with him. We'll pay him, only 15 minutes, he's the beginning of the meeting, it's not a big problem. It gives us the one-on-one opportunity to talk to him and tell him, you know, you're doing a good job, like I tell the sheriff, geez, zero crime, you guys are doing great. Or, hey, you know what, you're doing great, but... And then we put in, insert what the but is that they have to focus on. The code, the contract holds for Lynn Reeves to give direction to them, but that direction to Lynn Reeves comes from us. That's our responsibility. So, what I'm asking everyone tonight is, take a look at code, where we stand right now. What's the amount of time we wanna spend at $50 an hour? What's the level of enforcement we want to put through to this town? And be ready for the blowback. You can say enforce every single thing. And when that nine-year-old kid comes in and tells me they got a citation, I won't say the mayor told them to do that, I'm gonna tell you no. I want the code enforced, I wanna keep the city pretty, but I want us to be reasonable. We have been reasonable, very reasonable, ever since Danny has come on board. Before that, when I went door-to-door campaigning for mayor, I received numerous complaints. And I vowed that if I won, that was gonna be one of the others we're gonna fix. It is fixed right now and I don't wanna see it slip. But I'm only one person here. There's six other people, so that's what the purpose of tonight is. With that, I've said enough. Captain Liner, at some point, do you wish to address us and when would that point be? Because I've kinda given the introduction and where I'm going with this. Do you wanna hear from council for a bit and then come up?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if you have any other questions?
I'm sure there will be, okay? We'll call you up, okay?
Sure.
I open it up to council.
What?
Frank?
I think it's a good idea to have, to be, or you come in, but I'm gonna make sure he gets compensated, I'm sure these gentlemen-
He will be.
For his whole time, he has to sit here for two hours before he get, we usually have him come up right away, like, these gentlemen, I believe are all on the payroll. My pleasure, you ought to be, all right? We're the only ones who work for free. But what I'm saying is, I've talked to Danny on the street, he's pulled, I pulled over, I talked to him, he said, not only the officer, but always the gentleman, and he handles his complaints.
Very professional.
Couldn't ask for a better guy.
Let me tell you something, and this couldn't have been better timed. I watched Danny in action today. Now, Captain Liner, one of the things I'm gonna ask you about is doing these ride-alongs. I will sign any waiver you want, promising not to bring any legal action under any circumstances. I'll even post a bond if you want, okay? Danny has spoken about it, I wanna see what his job is like. But today, I did a ride-along from my home office because there was a person who had a, let's just say, something in his yard that he shouldn't have had, okay? Danny spotted it. Lynn's laughing, he knows what I'm talking about, okay? I mean, if you're gonna hide something, don't hide it on Gulf Boulevard, okay? Danny nailed it, all right? So, this person is not an easy individual to work with, okay? This is the same person, by the way, that Danny got to really clean up his house and look really, really spiffy, it looks great. So, Danny spots this. He gets out of his thing and I'm watching this all go down and he goes over, he documents it. Took about 15, 20 minutes for him to do all of this. He's almost done, goes back into his car, couldn't get him, okay? He may have been in the house and they just didn't wanna answer the door, I think they knew what was going on, but they didn't answer the door. So, Danny goes back because he did have prior conversation with him and I see him in his truck, in his police vehicle, picks up his cellphone and I think, I'm like, he's calling the guy. He did the extra thing, he went and called them, got in touch with them. Well, the item that was in his yard, now, no summonses, no brandishing of weapons, no body slamming, just, could you please take this out of your front yard on Gulf Boulevard because it's been there for, you know, a couple of days, it's gotta go? It was gone. Within two hours, it was gone. That's code compliance, no hard feelings from anybody. By the way, he found that on his own, no one called that in, okay? And that's, that's what we're looking for, okay? Their lawn's too high, you know? I had a hundred-two fever. My lawn got hot and I'm like, darn, I better get this cut. I had a hundred-two fever. I got out as soon as my fever broke and I cut the lawn. But you know, if you come in heavy-handed and it's like boom, 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 your gut, you know, your lawn's too high, well, that's what they did up in the meeting and it turned out the guy's landscaper had died and he was a veteran and that thing went viral and the mayor was getting death threats and it was just a horrible black eye for the city. We don't have that, we got a great code enforcement officer. You hear that Captain Liner? Great, not good, great, okay? I've seen him in action. And he is the consummate professional, not just with me, not just with Frank, but with all the citizens. I saw it again today. You cannot handle that situation better. And this is not an easy guy to deal with.
Now, I'd like to say that I've been very pleased with them, not just with this code enforcement, but with who he is. My mom was taking care of my kids, they were off school and my son, I guess was bored and he was throwing the baseball up against my house and so Danny stopped and said, hey, wanna play catch? And so, for like five, seven minutes, 10 minutes, whatever, he played catch with my son, which my son felt was the most amazing thing ever. And not only did it make an impression on my son, but it made an impression on me and my family and just those little things, that personal touch we've been missing in this city. And yeah, so that's why I fully supported him. In my eyes, he can do no wrong at this point, so I'm fully supporting him.
Robin, in terms of, I mean, I'm trying to get a feel, you know, my personal feel is, what I saw this morning is what I wanna say, okay? When Danny, the first time, they were fixing a leak, okay, and, and I saw Danny, okay, I had a leak on my roof, they had to come and put a little patch then on it. And this was two years ago, I'm like, Danny, look, I'm the mayor, here's, here's my take on this, okay? You're not gonna stop him, just come in here and tell people what they did wrong. Most of them don't even know it, we've got a code book that's crazy, okay? Nobody has one bigger. Just tell them what they did wrong, they'll fix it. Most of them. Now, you're gonna get the guy who's gonna say, well, you know, you go to wherever you're supposed to go to. Well, that's fine, then deal with him, okay? And he has, he's dealt with it very fine and he will ratchet it up. But I like the idea of getting the compliance and the fact that he made that extra step. He could've just slapped the thing on the door and walked away. He's like, you know what? He can take care of this right on the spot. That's going that extra mile, that's what I was talking about when he's, you know, done things for people. He'll take your garbage in if it's out there. He's not gonna sit and cite you because your garbage was out 24 hours and 15 minutes, he's not gonna do that. He's just gonna throw it on the side of your house and go on his day. He doesn't have to do that, that's not his job. He's excellent. So, I mean, this is my idea, but I mean, if the council wants a crackdown, well then, they'll say that, but we're gonna do that one, you know, like Dave said, we're gonna kinda hash it out here, but I'll put it up for a resolution then on the next meeting and you authorize that crackdown, but you own it, okay? And I'm not gonna vote for something like that. So, you know, I wanna give the direction to our city manager to say, the council wants a pretty city. We want him to use his judgment. It looks very pretty now and I drive around it, I like the look of our city. So, unless somebody's looking for something different. And I do wanna hear from the citizens on this too, so. But council, you got the floor.
Sure. The one, one piece of the puzzle that's missing is, is basically the, I guess the way that directions are given to Danny. I'm, I'm not aware of those. I'm not seeing them, I don't know if they're published or if they come across our desk. But I, I don't think we have enough information to determine if there's a real problem or not. And so, what I would like to see is, is what type of instruction set he has given from, from the city manager and then we start there and kinda start analyzing, start at the very, at the very top. Okay, here's your instruction set. Well, are there any subinstructions that are given verbally or at a later date or something like that? Or is, is this your guide? Now, go, go out and do good things for our city. I'm, I'm not sure. I've met him one time. I've had a couple neighbors say that they've either been visited by or a next-door neighbor was, was being visited by, by the sheriff and, you know, I haven't really heard anything, any major complaints. But I definitely would like to look deeper into the, the whole situation just to see if there is any room for improvement or if we need to dial something back. Cause I don't know, I just, like I said, I'm looking at this, I don't have enough information.
I agree with Dave, that's a good idea. And then one of my concerns too would be to make sure that the direction is uniform, not this side of the road enforce this, but on this side of the road, don't enforce. Like, it has to be, what's good for you is good for the under. Uniform rules, everything's enforced equally. Honestly, I think because he is not a city employee and because he is sheriff, I think he's the perfect one to be able to do that, to enforce everything uniformly and not take sides on an issue, not have an opinion, just like, hey, this is the code, this is what it is. You know, you can't argue with me that for whatever reason, I don't care who you are, I don't care that you're the mayor, stole the code, you gotta follow it. Sorry.
He picked me up as it wants.
But, and then I would say, as far as the take of whether or not to be strict or to be lenient, I'd say common sense. I mean, you're not gonna, you don't know that bike has been there for 24 hours. Maybe the kid moved it three inches to the right or went around and dropped in the same place. There's no way to, you know, and then if you go after a kid's bike, well, what about a rocking chair? That could be a toy, a form of entertainment, so you're gonna attack everybody in the city with a rocking chair on the board? So, if you get too strict, then you're gonna get into those little mini griddies because, yeah, I would be very upset if I got a summons because my kid's bike was there. I'd be more like, hey, maybe you should bring it out of the rain so I don't have to buy a new one, you know? So, that's just me, just, everybody gets the same enforcement, there's no special favors and common sense.
Yes. And then Frank?
Yes, I would actually direct most of my questions to the city manager. The direction you're giving him currently, when he gets, turns in those reports, is that following the directions that you're giving him? Because those reports are very thorough, very knowledgeable and it appears to me that he is covering the same things, you know, doing what he's supposed to do on code, but also on both sides of the street. Cause I like to see what streets are on there and what they, you know, what's going on. That's one thing I wanted to ask you. The next thing is, this council first-hand observation, honestly, I am not a big fan of that. I think it would hinder our code guy as well as put us in a spot with the citizens because now we're out there, we're the ones picking on him. So, we pull up with him and he writes a ticket or whatever. I'm not a big fan of that. I think that's his responsibility. I like a person in life, we gotta stay under him. But I'm just curious, did the reports match the direction that you give him? And do you give him directions that he doesn't do? I mean, that's what I'm curious about.
Well, we don't, Danny has a process. We, if, if we have a complaint that comes in, we'll give it to Danny and that may be his first priority for that day. But other than that, we don't, you know, I don't really tell him to go, you know, to this house or any other house. He, he does that on his own, unless we get a complaint. Now, if we get a complaint, then that's what he does. And for the most part, he, he goes through the city, he comes in at the beginning of his shift, he stops by, sees if there's any complaints. The end of the shift, he comes back and updates his book because what happens typically is, somebody will call and say, you know, what about this? And that's why we, we keep the logbook that we do because then we, we at least have the opportunity to say to that citizen, well, the reason he gave you a courtesy notice and for the most part, that's pretty much all he gives other than a short-term rental or a grass. We, we have a system where if we've told them to cut it and they don't cut it, then we send a letter out that's an abatement letter because you can't keep going back to the same people over and over and over. They'll, they'll tell you they're gonna cut tomorrow and there are some that will tell you that. So, in that process, we don't contact them the second, you know, the second or third time. We just go cut the grass and send them the bill. Prime example is the house on the corner, okay? At Gulf. We've been down that road many, many times with that homeowner and it doesn't work out. The house is on 15th Street, which the mayor is a little aware of. Danny's been there probably 30 or 40 times. It's the, but it's the same complaint. Well, they're not doing anything wrong. It's, this person just doesn't wanna park across the street from her house. That's the bottom line. Well, where do you go if you're building a house? You gotta park somewhere. In our code, it authorizes a summon and a park. But for the most part, the dock thing, we didn't give him that list. We went around, got all that stuff, the docks and the sea walls. He was given the list and he went around and left, if he talked to him, he told him, if not, he left him a courtesy notice. So, that's pretty much, the only real direction we give him is if, if we know there's a short-term rental, we're gonna, I'm gonna give him some direction because I'm gonna say, and sometimes, you know, you don't get all the information we need, so he ends up having to go back a second time. But for the most part, that's, that's the direction we give him.
I wanna leave, I mean, I do wanna have a, kinda get a better idea of what, I know what other cities do. I mean, I've reached out to some other cities, I know, as I said, I know a code officer. So, I don't know that we really need 20 hours every single week, that's a thousand hours, a thousand dollars a week to patrol. I mean, it may be better, you know, it seems like, 12 seems like it's kind of in the middle. It seems like that's about the right number with the proviso that, you know, sometimes all hell breaks loose for no good reason, right? And all of a sudden, I mean, here's a simple thing, right? There was a thing in the guy's yard and you say, ah, maybe that should take five minutes. Well, it didn't. It took like 15 minutes. I can swear, I can swear under oath, he was working every minute that he was there. He's taking pictures, he's knocking on the front door, he's looking stuff up, he's checking things, he's checking his code book. He's, you know, he's writing the stuff up, he's documenting for the sheriff's CAD system. I mean, it's not just a, a quick thing. Yeah, if it's a garbage pail, yeah, you can toss it on the side of the house, but I think some of this takes time. I guess there's weeks or days that all hell breaks loose in the city and everybody decides they're gonna break the rules at once and then, you know, other ones where he can sail through the city and just complete it quickly. So, I'd like to leave that flexibility. We don't give direction. I don't, I never have ever given him direction. I've told him, here's the way I see it and if it gets to be a problem, then the council will be here because everybody here has an opinion too. But what I'm hearing tonight is that I think we're all saying, hey, common sense, continue steady as she goes. As Dave said, we don't have all the information. I think it's a good idea to hear from Danny. Keep yourself some flexibility maybe with the hours. We don't have, just cause your budget's 20, you don't have to use them and maybe you use some of that for special enforcement like what Dave was talking about. Like, maybe we get in a boat and we go take a look at these derrin boats and docks and stuff. That could be kind of a, a special hit or whatever. I mean, I'd like to see it that way.
You know, he, he's, as an example, I've never had him work on any days that the office is closed, other than Sundays. And so, he understands that as an example. But what I'm proposing- But what I'm proposing to do with, after October, it'll be October 4th, give some more hours to him. We'll put some additional weekends in there and then fall back, you know. And if it's too much, we'll shrink it and do something, something else, you know, if there's a particular problem. But for the most part, to be honest with you, we don't really have a major problem in the city. It's a few, I think I have, I wanna say 12 or 13 houses that have an abatement letter because we've told them and, you know, they'll maybe cut, strip around the yard and they'll say, well, I cut my grass. Well, no, you didn't. You need to, examples, actually at BBI, there's a yard we cut a couple of weeks ago. I'm 20 seconds here. So this house on the corner, another example. But that's, you know, the public works staff don't wanna go cut this grass. But, you know, we have to do it to keep, because, you know, another resident says something to us about it. So it's better that we're more proactive this day.
I think we, you know.
And as far as the ride along, just to, that's what it is. Field observations are ride along. Right now, you can't do it because of COVID. My understanding is what you have to do is sign away from it, you have to get approval. But anybody can do that. You know, if any of the council members wanna go for a ride, the plastic seat in the back's pretty comfortable.
He's lying.
Well, you know, if you live in the neck of these cars, usually the front seat, passenger seats.
You don't wanna be in the backseat just yet.
So, yeah, so that's kind of a little wrap with this. Resident calls and complaints, then definitely we're gonna send the code report there.
And communications. I mean, I want him to feel free to speak with anyone, certainly citizens and absolutely council members. You know, not on duty, this is, you know, when he's on duty, he's on duty, he's there to work. I mean, it's hard enough to get to the city. But any council member that has a question, and I would like to see him, at least for a while, come up and do this, and I think it gives the citizens a chance. Because quite frankly, sheriffs, you guys do a really good job in this city. We don't have a lot to talk to you about during the sheriff's portion of the show, okay? I mean, when you come up here, it's like, yeah, we had like one burglary in the whole city. Well, what am I supposed to say? That's bad? I mean, most mayors and council members would be killed to have that kind of situation. So we don't have drug dealers on the corner, we don't have crack houses. I mean, we've got a wonderful city and some great work by you guys to make it happen. So we're not gonna, you know, spend a lot of time. But yes, he, Frank, to your point, he will be paid for every minute. It's the beginning of the meeting. And if we have a night where there's gonna be a million citizen comments for some reason, because citizen comments do come first. But I mean, if that's the situation, we could always slightly on that day change the agenda and move the sheriff first, take care of it, because that would be a quick one. You know, we don't usually get too many citizen comments. But we could call an audible if we have to and move that one on the agenda, so. Captain, I'd like to invite you up to just fill in any blanks here and then I'm gonna call on citizens and for Riley, you'll speak. Good friend.
I'm gonna read.
You'll need to put that mic on.
I just need a reminder.
No, you'll have to do up here. Fred's, yeah. It looks like John Wayne though, coming up like that, you know. Go ahead, Frank, you wanna speak before?
Yes, I'd like to read two provisions from the contract that you just recently approved. And they relate to, first is paragraph five, which relates to sovereign immunity. And part of that says, the parties agree that the city's determination to provide code enforcement services by contract is an exercise of the legislative planning function of the city. And that at no time will the city exercise any specific operational control over the activities of the employees of the sheriff or shall it perform or undertake any acts that are over and above a planning level function with regard to the administration of disagreement. So that's the code provision that applies going forward. The next provision is section six, which refers to the provision of service. And one of the sentences in that sentence or section says, the specific hours of work of this community policing deputy shall be determined by his or her supervisor after consultation with the city manager. So that's what Lynn is supposed to do. The whole discussion tonight, from my perspective, is the city council should talk about these issues and give Lynn direction as the city manager. And then Lynn is the liaison with the sheriff's department. But they were a, have sovereign immunity and they will act the way that, within the scope that they, they think is appropriate. The delegation of authority with code enforcement in many ways comes down to due process. And y'all need to, as the council, since you have delegated it to someone else to do it, in many respects, I would encourage you to be largely hands off other than giving the city manager direction. So that answered several questions that have been raised and I wanted to make that clear before he had an opportunity to speak. Although I probably took some of the words out of your mouth.
Frank, one more thing, Captain, before you go, and then returning it over to you. I just also wanted to add another piece here is that the sheriff's an independent contractor. So it's not, if we have a problem, if Danny's not doing the right job again, as council members, we let, that is our point of contact, okay? No one's asking for that to change. But if we have an issue with them or we're getting complaints or something like that, we'll bring it up. That's why I'd like him to be here. But then he will communicate with the command staff, captain, captain and whomever, if necessary, all the way up to Sheriff Colty Mary, to get the proper thing. Danny's not the only sheriff who does code enforcement. He does an excellent job and we're thrilled with him. We don't wanna let him go. But if for some reason there was a problem, there's alternatives with the sheriff's office. But we're committed, we just signed the contract with the sheriff's office. So with that, Captain, over to you.
All right, I'll try and.
Your mic is on?
It's on, there you go. I gotta lean in. I'll try and answer any questions that were already answered. So realistically, back when you all first started doing this. So we do code enforcement, part-time code enforcement for five other municipalities. So every one of them.
Captain, what are they, those cities?
The Bellar Shore, Bellar Bluffs, and with Reddington Beach, Reddington Beach and Reddington Shores. And Danny is actually the one, he'll do Reddington Shores, Bellar Bluffs and y'all. But anytime we start up, I have never walked into a meeting where there's a mayor or council member that says, our goal in code enforcement is to hammer our citizens. And we want revenue. You know, it's not, it's always just have a nice community, safe community and all that. And then you have rules, so you have it. So everyone I've ever talked to was, if we go out and talk to somebody and get compliance, that's what they want. And then if you didn't get compliance, then there was a certain procedure you can go through that elevates things. And that's kind of, that's how we're doing things here. It's how we're doing the other five municipalities. So that was day one. It's like coming in saying, this is what y'all want, this is what we're doing here. And like, yeah, that's the direction we got. So we started off with that. And then we were talking about renewing this contract, we were talking about hours and such. And I even with the city manager, but and this time I had Danny down there. These aren't billable stuff because obviously I'm salaried. So these guys, but anyways, Danny's on the hours out here. But we come down, we have a meeting to make certain we're all basically the direction you give Lynn and we're all in the same boat. And we talked about, what it really came down to was trying to get a baseline. And when the 20 hour, I think a part came out, was kind of like, well, if we did four hours, because sometimes four hours is too much. And sometimes it's not enough. It just depends on whatever day. Anybody can go out in five minutes and write an ordinance violation, hang it on the door and go. We still today, to do it the way we believe the town's interested in doing it, talking to people, getting compliance without, you know, money watch type thing. It took 15 minutes instead of five. So if you're talking to a couple of residents, you get sick streak and you're done with your day. So it just depends on what's going on. So the way we looked at it was, if we have four hours a day for the week and then adjust, not the same hours, because then everybody watches one. And then as soon as they go, then everybody's calling because he's gone. So we did a little adjustment there. Then we were talking about Sunday construction and stuff like that. So it's like, okay, well, we can adjust one and come here. Maybe in other ones, we adjust for the meeting or, you know, if we wanna give a report one time or something. So there's a lot of flexibility. But whatever you tell Lynn y'all want, he'll call me and I'll sit down and make sure it gets done. So that's kind of where it is. And then when we talked, and Lynn already talked about this, once we get that baseline, it's like, hey, four hours, you know, we're just stealing money here. We're not looking to make money or anything. But if it's too much code, then you talk about, you know, back off, do the, do the traffic, whatever it may be. But that was talking about October 1st to kind of kick this new code off, to get a baseline. That's kind of where we got with that. And just so you all know, Danny's day, realistically, he'll come in and Lynn, I think already hit on this. He'll come in, he'll check in the city hall, see if anybody called in any complaints. And then he'll start with those first. And then after he does that, let's say he'll start at the very southern portion of the city and he'll start working street to street. He'll go as far as he can until about a half hour, 20 minutes before the end of the shift. He'll go back to city hall, give Lynn an update on it, complete the book, the log, excuse me, to show what was done that day. And that kind of, that's kind of the end of it. So if it's a day that there's, everybody's in compliance, it's not gonna take that long to drive the streets. And he'll get the whole city covered. If it's a day everybody's out and everybody's got tarps up or cars or lawns, which is funny that everybody, they hear all these different things. Then he might, let's say he just stops at 18. Okay, well, the next day, it's the same thing. Come in, check in, anybody having complaints? He'll start at 18. And he'll groundhog, groundhog dog day, he'll go up to the end of the city and then he'll come back around here to get back up to 18. And it kind of works like that Ron Robin type thing. So he's doing patrols as well. So if residents call in, Lynn's the one that lets Danny know what's going on. We address those, so all your constituents, their concerns are addressed. And other than that, then patrol them. And then it comes down to like specific, I've obviously heard grass before, that one seems to be a big one. Short term rentals, I hear, very good. So but it just depends on what each town, which each city wants. So realistically, and the other aspect of not talking, and I know you're turning your car down. The only thing that kept ringing my phone, the only thing I told Danny was, I'm like, Danny, get new code enforcement. What you think, how many hours you think it should be, what your schedule should be, that's for me and the city manager to work out. I said, other than that, just, just please, just do code. And he's, Danny's a great guy. You guys all know, you know, ladies know that. And just, so anyways, that's where that came from. I'm like, quit talking about all this other stuff, you're making my phone run and driving me nuts. So that's what I, and I told him that. But so you know, Danny, I go way back to our community policing days. So he was my corporal in community policing when I was a sergeant. So he's built that way. He's built with, let's work with people to get things done and done the nice way. I mean, we could be with him, we have to, but let's try it this way first. Danny retired from here as a lieutenant. I coaxed him back. Because when we started talking about code.
He must love you.
Right, and I shouldn't say he's not mine, it's just sheriff's, what I recommended. And then when I called, I was like, well, I got a job for you. And but he started at Reddington Shores and then we expanded. When y'all came on, he came up here and then obviously in Bellar Shores, or Bellar Shore, excuse me, came online, he's doing that as well. So, so I joked with him all the time. He is, he's built for this position specifically. So that, and I'm obviously biased, I should say, because I've worked with him a better part of my career. So I think he's the right person. I think he's the right fit for the town and stuff for the city, excuse me. But it's like, whatever y'all want. I just wanna kind of at least tell you, that's kind of how it's working right now. And that's like in the ballpark where the 20 hours came from. And then once we hit this October 1st and we kind of get a baseline, then I'm sure Mr. Reeves will come back, give you an update and stuff. And then, so once we pass the code protocol, the ride along shouldn't be an issue. And then we can schedule out, Lynn, I'm gonna go on the schedule, we'll see if you have, if he wants to get a code enforcement update type deal. So I have no problem sending, I'm here to do, I gotta sit down and say, look, we're going there to talk about, you know, this is the code enforcement you done or the report, just like the monthly report. But I gotta watch the sideline. That's the only thing, so that's why I'm here.
No, he's, I mean, he'll be here to discuss code, your other, you know, you send everyone, it could be anybody, I could have sergeants, deputies, quarrels with whoever you send, you yourself, I think, have made them. So whoever does our regular report. But I would like to just, at least temporarily, until we kind of, particularly now, if we're gonna try something new. The only thing I just wanted to add though is, he has a couple of times heroically gone on a hot call. Okay, we don't get too many of those in Bellar Beach, all right? From my perspective, not as mayor, just as a citizen, I can't thank him enough for doing that. If that's me who fell down the steps or me whose house just got a home invasion, I really don't want him worrying about the grass that's too high on 12th Street or something, okay? Leave the grass, you come back to it later, which is exactly what he did. He kind of hit the timeout button, went and cut, you know, handled the hot call. And again, we only get, you, they don't even have to go through it. You know, we don't get a lot of these. Take care of the business and then come back out and, you know, and do the other stuff. And the other thing, I don't know if you're aware of what he did with the one lady who, it was almost like a commercial where she had fallen and couldn't get up for days and she was near death. He found her in that house. I mean, that is incredible work for any police officer, for any sheriff. And I mean, he's not a big awards kind of guy. I'd give him an award tomorrow for saving that person's life, okay? But I know he's not a big awards kind of person, I think that's him. But he deserves the highest commendation. He saved that lady's life.
I appreciate that.
That was by doing code here. That's a little beyond what he, what a normal code officer ever would do. But, you know, I don't want that to change, Captain. And at least I'm, there's six other people here, but I, you know, he's not here for a typical, you know, somebody's having an argument with somebody, but somebody's, you know, busting down the door or drawing weapons, you know.
Obviously, the secondary benefit of having us in code, we're not gonna turn away from an in progress type thing. Danny's just, Danny's just committed, is what it comes down to. I mean, he's the only one, I think, of the one we got to him, he was doing extra on his time. Which, I'm like, Danny, you can't do that, you're, there's all kinds of foul stuff here. And I go, Danny, you are gonna be the only one. I'm gonna have to write up on violations for working too many hours. Quit doing this and quit doing this, other than this, you're killing it. But I mean, obviously, I said I'm biased to all of them. But I'm here to, anybody else, anybody else have questions, put one here.
Council and then citizens, I want the citizens to have the opportunity to. Captain, go ahead.
Just curious, how does he, since he's controlling three municipalities, how does he keep up with the differences from city to city? Obviously, code is gonna be different in every single one of them, for every single topic. So it's gonna be a height issue, things like, you know, you know what I'm talking about. How does he keep up with it all?
He's still learning a lot of this, like I said, with Bellar Beach and stuff. But he's got references. So I mean, realistically, there may be a difference between the height. Amazingly, a lot of the towns and city have similar issues. So there might be, this might be eight inches, this might be 10 inches, like the old height. But so always gotta know, know is the difference in that. And it really comes down to, I mean, really what's germane for this city. And it'll be, and really, when you think, there's probably about 10, 10 things that are on everybody's mind. Nine of those things may be Reddington Shores and then you have a 10th one here. But I'm telling you, when they sit here and listen, they're all rattling stuff off. I'm like, yeah, yeah, you got that there, yeah. They're all, they're ultimately a commonality to.
Have the other municipalities offered some sort of a cheat sheet or something? What does he, does he have, what type of materials does he have? Or is, please don't tell me he's having to look at immunity code to figure out how to do his job.
He's got, he's got access to immunity code. I haven't talked to Reddington Shore in quite some time. So generally, generally what it is, if you come into the city, you have these top 10 things, you have those top 10, then you dig for the other ones. So you already have that kind of in a little, I wanna say one word, a bullet that's, as I said. I guess today it'd be like some type of computer, but you'll have what's most prevalent for the city. And then you have access to dig down into the other stuff. When you encounter somebody or something that's off the wall, then he still has access to that. So it's kind of like, I guess a quick reference guide. I'd have to, I'd have to give, because I know we go the other day, I don't know how he does it. They kind of developed their own little quick reference guide for that. If that makes, that makes sense.
Okay, thank you.
Community code is challenging.
Frank?
I don't know how we're talking with this mic to say. But speaking with Danny, he actually showed me, maybe this will help you out with your question. The sheriff, deputies that are in charge. The deputies that are in charge of each city, they go around looking too, to know that the immunity code. And most immunity codes, when you look at them, the cities are pretty similar. It might change, like you said, bush, shrubs, whatever. But the full-time deputies, is what I'm trying to say, get in touch with Danny and tell them, these are issues that you should be looking at, that they've already located. And if you look at the file, you can pull up any residents or any problem, and there's a case history right with it. And I think you guys just do an excellent job. I mean, I sleep well because of people like you. I mean, I really thank you for your service.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to jump to the citizens, then we'll come back, but I don't want to lose this opportunity. We have the captain here, so anyone would like to speak? John Hensick. And then June, Captain, I'm just gonna, so if you'll just step just slightly to the side, they'll come up and speak, and then you'll take the mic back. How's that? That's why I'll stay COVID proper here. Now, he's a big guy. I watched him. The John Lane walk.
All right, John Hensick, 26th Street. You opened up this discussion with something that I have heard multiple times that I find very troubling. But I kind of sort of understand it, but still don't. That, yes, Danny is an employee of Canoas County Sheriff's Department. But what bothers me is that unofficially, I'm going to say, he's prohibited from talking to council members. And that's going to change tonight, but that's. Council members, if I may, yes, are council members. They're also citizens of the city. And I have an issue if this is actually true. I've not had an opportunity to interact with Danny. Maybe that's a good thing. But I've heard nothing but good things, outstanding things actually, where he consistently goes above and beyond. To go play ball for a few minutes with a boy, that goes back to the original community policing. Or saving a woman's life. He's a keeper. This is one citizen, one taxpayer in this city. I do not want him to go away. But I'm concerned about this unofficial order. He's not to talk to council. I have a real issue with that. And if I may, I'll give you an example. In my duties as the Command Master Chief of Horseshoe Unable Command, part of my responsibilities was to mentor and teach junior officers. Sometimes they didn't like it. You can't talk to me, I'm an officer. Excuse me, I'm a chief petty officer times three by that. That's part of our job as chiefs, is to mentor and groom you to be better. Even the commanding officer, give him advice. This is the right way to go or go is not. So I really have an issue with this, and I'd like some clarification. Let's get it. Captain Liner?
Captain, I'll tell you where it comes from, okay? I make no bones about it, Danny and I, from the get-go, I never knew him before he came on our city. I've been impressed with him. We've had conversations. He's afraid to talk to me. Not because he's afraid of me, but he's, he's got the, I'll keep this, because we've been so well behaved tonight. He's either gotten the impression correctly or incorrectly that he's not to talk to us. And I've heard that's happened with other council members. It's cleared away right now, okay? Not only for Danny, but for all the sheriff's officers, okay? They should be free to talk. This is prohibited. Just let me know, and I'll discuss it in Sheriff's Call here as soon as I can get an appointment with him. I want to know, are sheriff's officers and code officers, I've never timed up their day. I don't expect them to talk three hours when they're on duty, but if they're on duty, off duty, if a council member approaches them, are they permitted to speak with them and give information about the city? And discuss what's happening, what's going right, what's going wrong, what problems they may be encountering? Is that permissible within the PCSO rules?
Any of the deputies can talk to anybody. The only thing with Danny and where it came to head was, when it comes to operations and direction, and saying, you're going to work these hours, or you're going to do this, like Danny, that's got to go through me and the city manager.
Absolutely. No one's.
So with talking to Danny, when the conversation was obviously, was just to say, I would hear this, and maybe talk about this hour, and things would come back to me, and Danny, you're killing me when you're talking operations. Operations leave that to me and the city manager. Other than that, I expect them to talk to everybody. Talk to all the residents, and talk to all the citizens, and talk to all, there's obviously no issue there. But that's where it was from.
And I think some of that too. If he comes here every council meeting, I mean, the first one might be longer than the next one, but he's right in front of us. We can ask, Danny, how's the 20 hours working? You think we need more, we need less? What do you think? One thing I don't want to do, I don't have to tell you this, we don't want to tip our hands, okay? So, you know, if we want to step it up on the weekend, we don't have to tell everybody that. But, you know, we just don't want to say, you know, we'll be out on Sunday. Well, sure, then everybody will work Saturday. But otherwise, I mean, I think we all should get our information. I've, you know, I've had conversations with you, you know, you and I have discussed many things. So I think it's fine. I don't give you direction. I can't tell you, hey, you better start patrolling, you know, 5th Street more. No, but if I see something going on, or something that, you and I had a discussion not too long ago, I'm like, I don't know if you really want to do that. You could say, hey, I don't care what you have to say. Or you could take that and keep a little peace of mind and change something. It's up to you. But I mean, I'm not telling, no one here should be telling hours, or oh, here's your new schedule for next week. That's not our job. That is clearly the city manager's job. But in terms of him talking to us, that's anything? You know, which is, again, within your code, you know, there's a criteria for what, he can't talk about an active investigation or something like that. No one's looking for that information, I don't think.
I guess the real way to try and clarify like the citizens' perspective is, anybody obviously bringing the call, anything to the attention of any of the deputies, to include a code enforcement issue with Deputy Doherty. I guess where it goes from there is that Deputy Doherty, based upon our chain of mail, in our direction, will handle it how we tell him. So I guess, so you came up and said, hey, so-and-so's got tall grass. You need to go down there and cut it. So that is kind of the difference. So if you say so-and-so's got tall grass, fine, that's not an issue. Then he already knows the direction we've given him. He's going to follow our stuff. So if that person down there sues for him going down and cutting the grass, then that's us. That's not the city. Because he's following our direction. So I guess that's kind of like, if that makes sense. So he can talk to anybody about anything. It's just when it starts getting into operations, it's like, huh, damn. That's where it's at.
I think that's, that is, uh, anyone else? I thought I said, June, did you go in yet? Come on up.
Captain, no, June.
Someday.
Union Square, 7th Street, Beller Beach. A couple of things, we talked about the, maybe the deputy going out and inspecting the road dogs and the sea walls. I just want to remind you all that the Fire Department had mentioned last year that they would mind taking someone out to do these inspections, that we, they could start warning for safety reasons, all our waters, in case they get an emergency. So it's just something to keep in mind, because then you have maybe the deputy right with this, somebody from the Fire Department, no liability to our city by having a personal, you know, a citizen doing it. So, because they're all in the plot for the county, so it's just something to think about. The other thing is, I'd like to make a little report, if that's okay, if I'm allowed?
I'll stop if you can.
Okay. So I haven't seen a deputy before now.
June, just talking through my hearing unit.
I haven't seen a deputy before now, before this happened. But two days this week, we had the school bus beat the horn, I want to say around, I don't know, 6 o'clock in the morning. I think somebody's blowing the bus stops, you know, blowing by the school buses over on 6th Street. So I just wanted to mention that, because they don't normally blow their horn, and usually, that's what usually the school buses do. So if you could just maybe have them kind of keep it hot, so, thank you.
Thank you. Captain, any, I'll see if there's anyone else that wants to speak with you? Or do you have anything to say after that? Okay. Anyone else? Good, Captain. Back to our council.
Just for clarification, because I really wasn't sure where this came from. Basically, what Danny has been told is, don't allow any council member to cloud their directive. Is that basically what, it's like, you can have a conversation, but you still have a job to do. And after you've had that conversation, don't let any one of us give him direct orders.
You can tell him, obviously, he has an issue, but he works for the sheriff, not the council.
Correct, right.
Okay, okay, that's. In my conversations with Danny, he's afraid to talk to me. And not because I'm a bad guy, he's not afraid of me, he's afraid to talk to me about the repercussions. So you've cleared it up tonight, he'll be allowed to talk to anybody here, and you can all reach out to him. And we'll have him right in our presence. And the citizens can tell him whatever they want. But, yeah, that's where, that's the vibe I was getting, okay? It wasn't, he knows, like, if I tell him, go bust David Gaddis's house, he's not going to do that. Okay, I would never tell him that. So he's not going to take direction. Lynn Reeves gives the direction. We work through Lynn, but we need to give Lynn the direction. That was the purpose of tonight, and I think, what I'm sensing, is we're pretty much all on the same page.
Thank you very much. I think the mayor and council, if you had noted about both sides of the street. So obviously, it's equitable enforcement across the board. So if we go down this side, and it's this side, and it's just like the mayor said, it's not like, go get that person, go get that. That's why we drive into 7th Street. So, I don't know if you didn't see some, one thing, but we're going to go down and make sure it's equitable enforcement. That's everything. So if they don't do that, that's a bigger issue. And in response to June's, I appreciate the heads up, we'll get with the patrol deputies and make sure they're out there. That's part of, that's actually in your contract city duties document, that when school's in session, that they're watching us. So, well, I'll send it out before I go, my.
They are out there. Last week, we got a $361 ticket.
Good.
At the bus stop.
June, didn't we see, didn't we see a sheriff sitting in the 6th Street thing, one of the days too?
One of the days.
So, yeah, they might even be aware of it already, Captain. So, but just so you know, yeah, that's great.
It's a standing, so, you know, another thing we have, we have a contract city duties document. And I'll meet with the city manager, we'll discuss this based on our discretion as well. Typically, y'all know, we change shifts every six months. Usually, it's smaller communities that notice more than the other communities. And some people move around. But as we move, I'll meet with Lynn, we'll talk about this document. And what it is, it's basically like a little template for each individual city to kind of tailor the services. So one of the things, I think, I don't know if it's in the contract anymore, but in that document is the bus stop, or the school bus stop, for the extra patrols during that. But there's a whole bunch of other things that are in there, parking enforcement, various, whatever. But the intent of that is when you have a deputy come into the city that's not familiar with the city, what I direct is they read that document. And it's pretty simple. Think about it, read the document, follow the instructions. So they'll go through there, and they'll see what's like an ongoing issue with each particular city. And then they know to basically, if they're coming and haven't been here before, hey, I need to go check with schools owner, or you know, other than that schools owner, but the school, the bus stop. And they'll do that all night. But I'll make sure that we do specific enforcement as well on this complaint.
And I didn't want insinuating that Danny ever treats one side or the other. I just want to say I'm all about equal rules, equal enforcement for everybody.
I appreciate that. I didn't take it that way. I just wanted, I took a note when you were talking, I just wanted to say, you know, it's all in the code.
I actually took the contrary, Captain. I've never heard that complaint. Other than a person who gets busted, who really gets busted. I mean, we had somebody on 1st Street had like converted their whole downstairs, Lynn's laughing, he knows what I'm talking about. Yeah, they were complaining. I'm like, sorry, that was like the guy who, when we were running the undercover stuff, came off the bridge at 55. I mean, I'm sorry, but you're just not going to get, you know, sympathy at 36. Yeah, all right, they were heavy-handed, but 55. So it's the same deal with this one. This guy had the whole basement, the lower level converted, and it was supposed to be a garage, so, you know.
Realistically, just like any time, you hit a limit. You don't have 90% of your people doing wrong things, or 95%. It's a few bad apples here and there, and that's what the procedure and the process is for. And as many people you pay, every time you go to the next level. Most, overwhelming majority of your residents are good people, and sometimes things happen. And it's able to get discussed, and it's not a punitive thing, not trying to get this money or that money. And can it work out, and everybody lives on one, so it doesn't happen everywhere like that. Beller Beach, realistically, it's pretty good.
Mike, Mike, Mike.
So we've had a chance to see him, if we can agree here that we can have him come to our meetings and just give us a quick briefing and.
Yeah, I'll give Lynn to see how we work out the code reports and stuff, what the work, some things out, but honestly, it's really.
Great. And let's try for a little bit, until we get our, you know, it's working with the 20. And we don't have to necessarily announce this to everybody, how many exact hours we're going to do, you know. We can talk in general, and then you can hash out the details.
Yeah, we've got pretty good, just now, against some different complaints.
Perfect. Captain, I want to thank you for coming tonight. It's a pleasure to have you here and hear all of this. Just tell Danny, at least from me, and I think from a lot of us here, that he's doing a wonderful job. And really, he is a keeper. I agree with what John Hensick said.
When was the, I think there was two, when, how long ago was the late, was that last month or?
No, it's been.
It's a couple of months ago, I think.
No, I think we just. Probably a little longer than that.
Okay. I'll give it to you. I think DeAngelo, the other code, did the same thing. Amazingly, as it sounds, another person in a different city that was out, but DeAngelo saved. So that's two, that's weird, just two code enforcement, like last six months of those situations presented themselves. So it's just nice to hear. You always hear the bad stuff. It's nice to hear. So I appreciate you, you know. I take notes on that. I will go back here with his supervisor and let him know.
Danny, I'm pretty certain we can give him our highest award, which is the combination, but I just, because I don't think he's a big awards kind of guy. But it's, we'll have to take a vote with our council, but I don't think anyone will vote against that. If he wants it, it's his. I just want to, you know, we don't hand that out. We only gave that out twice, so it's.
I can squeeze things in with that, no.
You let me know.
He has to do that.
He absolutely deserves it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Captain. Good seeing you again. Don't be a stranger. You're allowed to come to our meetings, you know?
Yes.
We're nice people. Look how nice we are tonight.
Thank you, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anything else on code enforcement? Captain Frank?
I don't want to start from square one, but this isn't a draw-up. The idea of having the fire, and the, I don't know if Danny would be the proper guy, I don't know how much schooling he has with boats and docks and whatever, but we don't run a boat, to my knowledge. So maybe three or four times a year, to have somebody do that would be a great avenue to address and looking. Because surely, we don't want to use a citizen to use a boat to go out, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah. But we do, we better have releases. Sheriff, you have boats, right?
We have all of them.
Okay, they got boats.
What I'm saying is.
Helicopters, they got everything.
The idea with the Fire Department, Dave involved both, I mean, because some of those things can catch on fire. You see the frail wiring, and that, those electric boasters.
I'd rather not do it. I mean, I know Dave has done, and I know other citizens have offered, we've had.
We didn't approach, we didn't, I mean, we were 25 feet away, and, you know, taking pictures with a camera. It was more of a joyride, wasn't it? I don't even think it was, it wasn't even my boat, not just you.
No, we just have something in official capacity, so.
Got three sheriffs in the back, don't have your ten. All right. Any other things on code? I think we're square.
Correct.
Lynn, we're all good. General business, do we have anything? I just have one item.
I just want to, Fred and I have been working on this buoy ordinance. And I gave you a copy of it Friday. I finally got, not finally, he was pretty responsive, the guy from Fisherman's Line. So he's given us his blessing on the buoy ordinance, for us, just for us. And then Fred and I met last Monday, yeah. And there's a letter in the back that we drafted to possibly send a Bella Shore to. And there's a letter in the back that we drafted to possibly send to Bella Shore to see if they have any interest in that. But I want to get some consensus from the council that, because what was brought up, that we would pay for two additional buoys in the installation. And we'd help them work on getting the permit. But one caveat in all of this is Bella Shore has to change its ordinance to meet the current statutes. So, so there's a draft of the letter. Actually, one sentence will be changed, because now I've got back from Florida Fish and Wildlife to say it's, our ordinance is fine. So we'll bring that first reading, if everyone's fine with it, on the first meeting in October.
So Lynn?
I'm sorry, I have a...
What's this, page two? Do you just have page two?
Yeah, I'm missing it too.
Is it in copy?
No. No.
Okay. Well, page two is, is...
It's the meeting of the ordinance.
It gets, no, it's not the meeting of the ordinance. It basically says that it kills the ordinance in conflict and the effective date.
Okay.
And the past and adopted. Why didn't, I guess...
It's not history, pardon, that same page you just read on.
Yeah. So, but you do have the letter, the draft letter? Okay, so the meeting of the ordinance really is the first page. We're just trying to come up in compliance with it.
So we can review this individually, not to do now, review it individually. Direct comments to you, and you'll take them to Fred, so we all barrage Fred if he has any comments at all.
Yeah.
If you don't hear comments, we'll go to the next council meeting and hopefully pass.
Yeah, if I don't hear any comments, then we'll put them on the agenda for...
What date?
This is, this is what, the next council meeting?
No, what day would you like the comments, I'd allow you, Fred, to do your thing.
Probably by Monday, a week.
A week from today?
Is that good, Fred? We shouldn't have any changes, because it's what the, you know, if there's any changes to it, then we'll have to send it back to the state before we bring it to you.
So we try to minimize changes. Comments due by 9/27 till then?
Yeah, and then, what's the consensus on sending this letter to Bella Shore?
I would like to wait till after we give out the rest of the questions that we want to ask and stuff, because I'd like to know the cost of these buoys, the cost of the maintenance, because that's gonna be forever on Bella Beach, correct? If we do this, it would be our expense forever to maintain them.
Well, technically, they're Bella Shore's. Bella Shore has to get the permit. I did talk to Fish and Wildlife about that, and they would still be the permit holder.
It says here in the letter that Bella Beach is willing to pay the cost for purchase, installation, and maintenance, so we would be a jury.
Right.
That's what Brittany was saying, she was like, see who's gonna be responsible for that.
Well, there's, there's money in the budget every year for buoys. In fact, there's more money I think for carpets and buoys, so... I think the markers and buoys are more important than the carpeting here. I mean, I think the carpeting sprail or frame is gonna be a trivial hazard if you often replace them. I appreciate priorities in order.
One more question I had was liability. Would this release us for liability, if it gets hurt because of those buoys, or if they come loose? I mean, those are kinds of things that I'd like to have before I give a consent, my vote on sending this to Bella Shore. Do you know significantly, whether we'd be legally responsible for any lawsuits? If anybody got hurt out there, if they come loose, go up on anybody's property or do any damage that way? I mean, those are some of the things that we probably should have the information on as well.
Are you talking about the buoys that are within jurisdiction, or the buoys in the other cities?
Talking, the buoys that, we're looking at that for Bella Shore, and covering the cost of all of this, and the maintenance and stuff, talk about these.
Well, I'm not gonna tell you there's no liability for putting up a buoy, but if you put it up consistent with the procedure that the Florida statutes require, and you follow the administrative code, instead of opening up your liability, I think you're going the other way, and you're absolutely minimizing your liability. The worst possible position to be in is recognizing there's a problem, and then doing nothing about it, or hearing it inertially or negligently. So then this, we, we spent a lot of time with Frank going over this. Lynn and I have spent considerable time on it, and the whole objective was to make sure that this was being done consistent with the law. So, I, you know, I've been a lawyer too long, so I'm not gonna rule out the possibility for somebody filing a lawsuit, but I, I think you're going the other, other way on minimizing liability.
Frank, just for clarifications, the longer we wait, and I brought this up at our meeting, since we were the ones that removed the buoys in Bella Shore's, which FWC shouldn't have gave us permission, because now we have to, we have to Bella Shore's to ask permission to put a buoy back. And since we're the only ones that require the buoys to be removed, if there is an accident, and you got three lawyers in this room, okay? I think we could be liable, okay? This letter here, where I would like to see it a little bit stronger, but I'm fine with it. This letter here, I think, takes the liability away from Bella Beach if there is an accident right now. So the longer we wait, I think... Just, just to be clear, Bella Beach did not remove any buoys. The buoys broke away and floated away. No one removed any buoys. We put our buoys in the jurisdiction of the city, we put those back in. This ordinance is gonna, what it's gonna do for us, actually, is put us in compliance with the statute, and then we're gonna have to change the stickers on the buoys, and we've already got that price. It's gonna cost us somewhere between $2,000 and $3,000 for our buoys. And, and that's what this ordinance is, it's for our buoys. What we're asking Bella Shore is to join us. But, you know, everybody keeps saying, we removed them, we did not remove them, they weren't there. Yeah, but Lynn, the permit, I think it's O1-020, clearly says that we were the, we were the sole maintainer of those buoys. And if they were missing, we were supposed to replace them, I believe the word, immediately. So, you put all that together, you bake it into a pot, it comes up big, if there's an accident.
I mean, look, if somebody gets carved up by a boat, and these buoys haven't been attended to, there are three lawyers up here, and you don't have to be a lawyer, because you know what's gonna happen. Every, every one of us is getting sued, you know, all cities are getting sued. So, you know, we know there's a problem. They, you know, Bella Shore should know there's a problem, and hopefully they'll work with us. Certainly, we fix ours, and then that's maybe as far as we can go, but, you know, Frank has worked incredibly, and I want to thank you incredibly hard on this issue since you came on. And, you know, your dedication to the safety of these citizens is incredible. I'm very impressed. So thank you. Okay, good. I just have one thing, and we don't even have to decide it tonight, I just want you to think about it, but we can decide it tonight and fix it real quickly. We spent a lot of time last meeting, we do it a couple of times, sometimes with the agenda, these consent agenda items. And I kind of looked around to see what somebody did, and I wish I had printed it out. I swear it was either Daytona Beach, or Daytona Shores, or one of the Daytonas. And I thought they had a really simple system that worked really well. Any council member, any council member can move an item off of the consent agenda. That would have ended about half an hour of debate, okay? So Lynn can make his best call as to what he thinks is consent agenda, and any one of us can move the thing into the regular agenda. If there's no discussion on it, boom, it's done in 10 seconds. But we will spend less time going through the agenda, because that's usually the issues that we have with it. That's what they did. It seems to be a simple solution. We don't have to have all these debates, and obviously, is this really critical, but we really need the city residents to comment on it? We just, any one of us, any one of us, no debate. Frank Banker looks at it and goes, I want the minutes moved off. Boom, they're moved off. He had a reason for doing it. And I, I think that's a simple, easy, save a lot of time. We're looking to cut the meetings down, this cuts the meetings down. You move it into the regular agenda, you get your discussion, whatever that person's concern was is addressed. Citizens have the right to speak on it, and we're done, and we vote on it, and it passes. That's just a proposal, think about it, or we can change, if everybody has consensus, we could make that adjustment so...
Yeah, that, that's always been the case.
No, we have to, right now to change the consent agenda, we have to have a motion second, and then majority.
No, any council member has always been able to remove something. As an example, if, if you said number five, I'd like to move it to the regular agenda, that's, that's what you do, and then you approve the agenda.
I tried to remove minutes, and they didn't get removed. I asked for a motion, there was no motion or no second, it didn't happen. And we actually had a mo, there was a, it wasn't like they were so erroneous, but I would have liked to have the vote reflected. It was a six to one vote, and I wanted to reflect how the vote went, so...
That's correct.
Well, we're coming full circle on this issue, because that's the way it used to be. Any council member would just say, I'd like to move this consent agenda, or your consent agenda, but if there's...
If that's our rule, then, then there's nothing to change.
I mean...
But that's not what we're following, so that's incorrect.
Before it got off the rails.
I don't know, we, to change an agenda, we're, we've been changing it via a typical motion format. So if you're telling me that we can do that, then there's nothing to change, and then that's the way we'll change it, and the, the agenda can be changed instantaneously. I was not aware of that, and nobody made me aware of that, so I'm sorry about that. I missed it. I thought we had to do the irregular amendment to, you know, because we had a motion to accept the agenda, and then we had a motion to bring an item out of, or change it however we had to change it. So if we, if you're telling me any individual can do it, then that's the way we'll handle it. That's, no need to change anything then. I'm not asking you to know it more by heart, but I mean, that's what Lynn seems to make that...
All seven of you are here, so if that's...
That's what we want, right?
If that's the rule, then that's the rule you should apply going forward.
That simplifies it all a lot, this, we all in agreement. Citizens have any comments, or you want the meetings to be longer? All right, everybody's in for a minute. That's all I had. Fred?
I have something.
Sure.
And it, it is an incredibly challenging thing to the city council, but I'm gonna ask it nonetheless. I'm, I'm going to describe a situation, and I'm going to ask you to give me a yes or no answer without discussing it. Okay? And I really mean it.
This might not be possible, go ahead.
It, it's, it's infinitely reasonable, so it should be very easy to do it.
Okay.
So let me, let me explain the situation. All of you are aware of it. You were here a couple of weeks ago, and there was a robust discussion, and this is in this, these, consistent with this evening's discussion. There was a robust discussion about the Section 2-63. And the city council debated the change to the code, and the city council on first reading ultimately amended the language that I had come up with. And I thought what I had come up with was fine, but the council has a prerogative to change it. So you changed it, and you passed that on first reading by a split decision, I should add. The thing I will ask you, well, I'll, I'll get to my, my real quandary. I left there, and I have thought about this ever since, and I've thought about it endlessly, because I had council members ask me to give assurance that this is not going to result in a problem, and I had a different dissenting opinion that this is going to result in a federal lawsuit. Okay? So I'm in the middle, trying to find a way to work with both sides of the spectrum, and at times, it is incredibly challenging. So, the up or down yes or no question is, prior to me doing some, what I think are minor changes to the, the code so that they can be presented at the next meeting, I would ask the city council to give me the green light to talk to members of the city council about how can we find a solution to this problem. And I think that's a very reasonable request, and I would like you to give me the consensus to do it. And what I don't want to do is, you know, not have the consensus, me spend a bunch of time, me write off a bunch of time, me be more frustrated than I am already. This one should be easy.
Okay. Okay, hang on, let, let, I think, just hang on one second, just gonna keep this officially correct. We're not allowed to actually vote on something, we can give you a consensus.
That's what I asked.
So, I'll ask the question, that hopefully will do it the right way. Do we have consensus that Fred Riley can speak to the people he believes he needs to speak to regarding this ordinance in effort to address any issues that he may have as our city attorney? Fred has always been responsible when it comes to hours of billions, so I don't even, I don't even have to look at the provides again. Does he have a consensus from us? Anyone against it or for it? Yes or no? Who's all in favor? I mean, I?
No, it's pretty stuck there.
Is anybody opposed?
That sounds good to me.
I mean, it's good, so please go ahead, thank you very, very much.
Wonderful, thank you.
Lynn, what are you showing us here, preparing for Elsa?
I, I forgot to mention this before I finished. In Bella River, our public works staff, they did an article on that, so make sure you take a look at it. Some pictures where they did sandbags. So, you know, that's, it's real, real nice, showing some pictures helping the residents.
Is that the device they created for you two?
Yeah, yeah, so you can do 10 sandbags at once. I think Frank got some experience with it.
I actually helped out, actually, I think the last storm, they had two more, I think they actually had three now.
Yeah, yeah, we do. So, I just, you know, I wanted you to be aware and...
That's good that they got that recognition. We've always recognized, recognized them internally, and we also recognize Frank as a sandbagger, do we, we know that for...
On the golf course.
That article is written by Joel Chandler, is that correct? Because I've been receiving it as well. Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because I'll personally encourage her.
Does anybody else have any other issues? Counsel, this was a very nice meeting. Enjoyed being here, and thank you everyone for participating. We have a motion to adjourn?
So do I.
And everybody in favor? Hi, thank you, have a good night.